When, when he called for second, nobody's making seconds, so I'm making seconds because it gets get this thing moving. Okay, the whole thing was the budget came out ahead of time. It was a twenty-three dollar budget.
Wow.
And of the twenty-one million budget, all of the income that they estimate from printing and all that good stuff, the county assessment for the entire county, when it was divvied up was like six million and change, and that got divvied up by.
All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's Wednesday, July twenty-fifth, two thousand and eighteen. This is your regularly scheduled Board of Selectmen's meeting, even though we're on a bi-weekly schedule. This meeting is being recorded, both audio and video. It will be played live on Channel Nine, there will be playbacks on Channel Nine. We will also place this on YouTube for your viewing. At this time, I call the meeting to order if I didn't already, and let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, while we're standing, I would like to mention the passing of Frances Betty Crawford. I think most of us knew her as Betty Crawford. Betty lived on the corner of Pine and Center Street. This is a lady who saw a need in town and took action. She recognized the need for a public water supply. The north end of town had public water. The rest of the town had to rely on wells, and quite often they went dry in the summer. She's actually considered to be the founder of the original Dyton Water District, because when she recognized the need, based on her own needs, when their well went dry, and she used to have to carry water from the Segregance at River on Center Street for their needs, she actually called a meeting of interested citizens, and this got the ball rolling for the Dyton Water District. And when the town celebrated its three-hundredth anniversary, there's this, there is an article in there that Betty wrote. It's kind of humorous, I think it's on page eighty-nine. But the Dyton Water District recognized Betty as being the sole surviving participant of the first Dyton Water District meeting. The other thing I will mention about Betty is she was a graduate of UMass Amherst. She was very active over at the Aggie School and with the four-H clubs. And Betty, I'm sure this is going to mean a lot to you, because I'm sure you've said it many times. This is the four-H pledge, that she spent a lifetime working with young people in the four-H club. "I pledge my head to clearer thinking, my heart to greater loyalty, my hands to larger service, and my health to better living for my club, my community, my country, and my world." And in Betty's memory, I ask for a moment of silence, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Our condolences to Mrs. Crawford's family and friends. So tonight, the first thing on the agenda, we have some special guests, thank you all for being here. We have a presentation by the Regional School District on the proposed modular units set to hopefully go into Dyton Elementary School. We have school committee chairwoman Eliza Kucha here, thank you, superintendent Dr. Azar, and building manager David Nappi. So thank you all, and at this time, whoever wants to come up, you have the dais. And thank you.
Hold him on, or see.
Whichever you prefer, Dr. Azar, the floor is yours.
If you don't mind.
Not at all.
But you realize there's nothing in front of you to protect.
That is correct. My left side, the blind side, I see a podium helping me out. And Nancy and I go way back, all the, all the way before years ago when I first started.
They shoot at you, they may hit me.
I think, I think we're going to be all right, because it's nothing but good news.
Okay.
Actually exciting news. First of all, on behalf of the Regional School District, thank you for inviting us this evening. We have just a, a wealth of information on a number of fronts that impact Dyton as well, within the Regional School District. As you most readily know, we were able to pass an override in the town of Rehoboth. Rehoboth is catching up to Dyton, and let me phrase why. In the last year and a half, or thereabouts, the Rehoboth Town has voted for two debt exclusions and an override. And that typically happens in Dyton, kind of like you blink your eye. And, and you know, one thing, I want to make sure that the Dyton folks understand that we do not take the town of Dyton for granted because of that. There are mountains that have to be moved at times. There are a lot of things going on as well. You folks have, you know, the infrastructure, you've been working on it for, for years, and it's, it's just getting better and better with the addition of our town administrator. From a governmental standpoint, you just can't go wrong there. So that's, that's exciting news for the town of Dyton, obviously. We're here tonight to talk, obviously, about the modulators. And as you know, in the numerous discussions, and we've had quite a few, about modulators and, and what the enrollment looks like in, in Dyton, and, you know, just an array of issues that have come forward. But the big what-ifs really have been removed because of the override passing. If you recall, the budget that you folks passed without a blink of an eye, ten million plus dollars, that put three additional teachers at Dyton Elementary School, but no place to put them at the time. Now with the override passing, we have three classes that will be, you know, student-friendly, environmentally sound. We just have to create it now, you know, in the parking lot. So with that in mind, we've always discussed, we mean in the Regional School District, in the, in our capital committee, approximately two and a half years ago, we talked quite extensively about whether or not we would get modulators or brick and mortar. So, so that was a discussion, if you don't mind if I can just kind of go back historically, not too far back, because it's only a few years, and I'll, I'll try to not be too verbose.
I can do the ancient stuff.
Okay, Nancy will right interject as needed. But I think it's important for folks to know that this is not a topic that you folks in Dyton, or we at the Regional School District, have just swept under the rug and looked the other way about our enrollment. If you go back a, a few, a couple of years, you, you afforded us to reconfigure our Dyton Elementary School to try to get two additional classrooms, which we did. That was, I think, a hundred and ten, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. That was not just a Band-Aid, that was a, that was a, that was substantial. And, and that's what we did. But that was really to get us over the hump, to get an understanding through our capital committee about building, building capacity to try to alleviate what the enrollment will look like going forward. And as you recall, we tried to reduce our budget a few times. We reduced it to a point where we did eliminate some classrooms to try to configure it. But as we were doing that, the enrollment from outside increased, and it increased within. So we, we, we had some early childhood classrooms on the Dyton side, and, and also Rehoboth as well, some of their kindergarten classes just ballooned to, to the low to mid twenties. And I remember the fateful day on March second, which is Dr. Seuss's birthday, I was invited to a kindergarten class, and there were twenty-five kindergarten students in front of me and one teacher. And it was just remarkable what the kids were able to do, but it was also not conducive to an education that you want, you know, the twenty-five students to have, because it was just too many kids in, in that particular classroom. But nevertheless, as we go forward, and, and we have gone forward, we got to a point where in our capital committee, we talked about brick and mortar, or we talked about modulators. And, and two or three years ago, we were talking about ten to twelve classrooms. That's what we originally talked about. But the cost factor, where was it coming from? And you folks were just starting to talk about the police station, and the library, and some other things. And just like on the Rehoboth side, and, you know, bear with me when I bring in Rehoboth as well, because we are a school district, and obviously, as you saw with the budget, it is very impactful between the two towns. But we also saw on the Rehoboth side, they were trying to expand out with a municipal complex that was not, it didn't go, you know, that vote. And then the schools did the debt exclusion, and it passed. Then there was, you know, some animosity, like, oh, the schools always get everything. And, and that's not necessarily always the case, but it just seems that like that was happening. Okay, so now we fast forward. We come to a point where an override is passed. The impact, that three-point-five million dollar reduction that we were working on within our administrative staff led to approximately a hundred and five layoff notices. And now we're in the process, as you know, of rescinding all of those layoff notices. But what people don't understand is that, aside from the torment, the emotional torment of giving people one hundred and five layoff notices, to try to rescind them is not that, is not as easy. Because we, we were dealing with four associations, four different ways through the collective bargaining agreement on how to bring people back. So in some instances, and in most instances, it's a registered letter, two weeks to decide. We have to identify what position we're calling people back at. So the override took place on July seventeenth, it passed on the eighteenth. We had a school committee meeting, we talked a little bit about it. And then by July nineteenth, we had all of our registered letters out in the mail, which was an additional cost, as you know, they're roughly close to seven dollars per, and we had eighty, about eighty-seven or so, so that was not budgeted for. So that's, so we, we start off a little bit behind, but nevertheless, we'll, we'll definitely catch up. So, so, and the reason why I share that publicly with you folks is to just give an indication that we are moving forward, we are doing what we said we were doing, but it takes a, a little time. But we do have a little time, because September is another month and a half away to begin school. So we hope by the end of the middle part of next week that all the teachers are back where they need to be. To, to, to my knowledge, there are a couple that are still thinking about other job offers with, which they received, and there's no animosity towards those folks because of the Yanks created family situation, so, so we get it. We hope everyone stays on board. But so far, the majority of, of staff members who did receive a layoff notice have responded back to our, our, our letter of rescinding, and we're, we're going to be in a good place. Okay, so with that all in mind, what we're proposing, and what we've proposed a number of times, our school committee was presented, and they picked the bid that was in front of you. And I think, I think from the, the town side and from the school district, we're, we're all in agreement that six classrooms does the following. The temp, I'm sorry, six temporary classrooms does the following. It gives us, meaning the district and the town, an opportunity, we're talking roughly three to five years. So when we say temporary, it's about three to five years. It could be as early as three years, or it could be as late as five years. We don't see it going past that. And what is it that we don't see past that is the following. We believe that we have two parallel pieces going on here. Number one is a statement of interest that we're going to present to the MSBA that does the roofing, and they, and they will do a, a study based upon what we need to come in. But what we're also going to do is a district-wide piece as well. So MSBA's statement of interest will be for the Dyton campus. And that doesn't open until around April. That's when they ask for the statement of interest. The second piece is that we belong to what is known as NezDek. It's not the, the stock exchange. I don't have the, anyone can just Google it right now.
New England School Development Council.
There it is, Nancy.
History.
History, it's all about history.
I'll do the old stuff.
Right, so, so we're, we, we are part of that organization, and we are reaching out to them to see if they can, and not if they can, but they do provide an opportunity for their group to come in and look, they'll be looking, we, we'll ask them to look at the entire district. Because if you recall at the town meeting, not the second one, the first one, there was, there was questions about the superintendent and the regional agreement having an opportunity to move Dyton kids to Rehoboth, or Rehoboth kids to Dyton. And, and that's not something that people are readily jumping on board for, nor, nor were we. You know, about displacing kids. And we're only, I think we're talking about fifteen to twenty kids. How do you choose them? Where are they? Who are they? How do you do this? Okay, we didn't think it was at that crisis level, obviously. Nor did we think it was in the best interest of, of the educational pursuits for, for those kids and those, and those families. So, so that's, that's impactful. So statement of interest, and NezDek coming in and looking at the entire district space-wise, with the emphasis, obviously, on Dyton Elementary School and the, and Dyton Middle School. Right now, there are some growing pains on the Rehoboth side, but Palma River Elementary School, we rent out some of the classrooms to the South Coast Collaborative. So if we needed to, one thing would be, it would be a year out. I mean, we wouldn't move them in September, that just would not be fair to the collaborative. And they've been an incredible partner for us, for the district as well. And, and that minimizes our special education costs, and so, so they've been a really good partner. But Rehoboth does have some wiggle room. At the middle school, they have a few classrooms as well that could be utilized. So, so right now, the enrollment crunch really is on the Dyton side, I mean readily, right there in front of us. So these six classrooms will provide us with some breathing room, some breathing space. Three to five years, we'll take care of our needs, we'll have an understanding, we'll have the statement of interest moving in one direction, we'll have NezDek looking at something else as far as, okay, is it, is, do we need ten classrooms at Dyton Elementary School? What do we need at Dyton Middle School? Now, these modulators could also be used futuristically for the middle school, following the bumps in the years and getting a better handle on the enrollment piece. So, so we're, we're, you know, we're, we're excited that the override passed, because it took out, and you remember a, a lot of the questions were, well, what if the override doesn't pass? What happens to the three teachers? What happens? So that, in a nutshell, is where we're at, that's why, you know, we're excited, excited. This seems like the, the final hurdle to move forward on FY two thousand and nineteen. And I think we're in a very, very good place. Our, our school committee is working better than ever with us as administration, and we, we see really, really great things going on in, in Dyton and Rehoboth for, for many years to come. And that old adage about, oh, do we have to ask for an override every year, that is absolutely not true. We, we will be working with the town of Dyton and the town of Rehoboth. As you know, our overarching goals, number one is student achievement, and the second one is to support the financial stability of both of our towns. And, and in discussion with, with the town of Rehoboth, because there was a little backlash that, well, how, how can you, you know, fulfill your second goal of sustainability when you want to raise taxes? Well, that was part of the sustainability that we were talking about. And, and it's not often that people go out to, you know, jump for joy when you're raising taxes. However, it was connected to something very important, the student education, so. That's where we're at, and Dave's here tonight as well, Eliza's here, I'm here. So if there's any questions, comments, concerns, you know, we'll, we'll try to answer as best as we can.
So Ms. Selectman Pacheco and I were present at the school committee meeting, so I think, you know, we'll give Selectman Goulart the chance to ask questions if she didn't have that opportunity. But I did just want to touch on something that you said, because it really, it's true. I have had people, before the override, ask me regarding the, the space at Dyton Elementary. Why wasn't that studied before? Why didn't they do anything before? And I think it's important that residents understand the environment that you were in at that time, where Rehoboth didn't pass the debt exclusion in two thousand and fourteen. I don't mean to go back into time, but it, it didn't look very promising that a building was going to get funded, especially with, as you know, the issues that we had with getting the police station project going. So I think the context is really important. I think we've turned, we're starting to turn the page on that, both towns.
Sure.
Supporting the schools.
Absolutely.
Asking, you know, tough questions, because you don't just, you know, maybe not on the budget, because it did pass pretty quickly.
Yeah, yeah.
But you're always there to answer questions. I know Chairwoman Kucha, you know, is constantly answering questions. So I just wanted everybody to understand the context of the environment several years ago. So I think the time is right to, to start getting a temporary solution for the, for the crunch, right? We would potentially, if it passes and it's approved at town meeting, we would own the tri, the modular units. And then if we had issues at Dyton Middle School, we could possibly move them. I think that's a, that's a fantastic idea, so we're not in a crisis mode again.
Over and over.
And I think, so it's, and then at the same time, we're planning for doing a study, is a structure needed? And I think that, that is absolutely the way to go. So I wanted to commend you both on that. I know it's not easy, probably you feel it's a thankless job a lot of times, being on the school committee, but we appreciate it very, very much, and at this time, I'd like to open the floor to you.
On the page that's, big clarification sheet, page two, number seventeen, the forty-five day validity for pricing, is, are we okay with that? Because the next sheet talks about a schedule, and forty-five days is, is not going to be sufficient. So is the price firm, are they willing to do that? I mean, they have to know what you had to go through to get this done.
So people can't hear Dave back there, can they?
Oh, why don't you come up to the podium?
And it's not recorded, well.
Yeah.
So we would, the first one up here.
Thank you, Mr. Nappi. Yeah, so, so the question was, the pricing was good for forty-five days, and the schedule that is shown goes back to May, so is the forty-five day pricing going to hold?
The forty-five day pricing will hold. We did an addendum to the RFP, and that was based on the need to purchase. So what we did is we had several contractors that met the bid approval, so we sent an addendum out them, to them to reapply with a purchase price. So it is, it's valid for forty-five days from the addendum.
Okay, so what we're, what we're paying for, we're going to own, this is not a lease. It's a outright purchase, they're ours, period.
There you are.
What's the total cost?
I have that. One point one oh four, so one million, one hundred and four thousand dollars.
And we've already given three hundred thousand dollars, approved three hundred thousand.
Three hundred has already been set aside, and I have the balances and the accounts we're probably going to be using. So we're good, we have the money. I have a couple of questions on that, but I will defer to you.
Okay, since we're talking about money, do we have funds sufficient to cover this? So we aren't doing ra, the only raise and appropriate is the two hundred thousand that we did at town meeting?
So, yes, two hundred thousand for raise and appropriate, and a hundred thousand came from free cash. That's already, you know, put it in the bank, it's, it's there.
Right, right.
So the, the remainder is about eight hundred and four thousand dollars. We have one point five million dollars in one stabilization account, and one point one million dollars in another. My hope is that we take it from a stabilization account, and then with free cash, once that's certified, goes back into the stabilization accounts, so that we can not, we just want to have that, it's safe, and, you know, we can ultimately end up paying for this in free cash.
I have a question about that, though.
Yes.
Like a logistical question.
Sure.
Do you have any reservations, or, or do you, Dr. Azar, or Mr. Nappi, about that? Because as I understand, if we're going to take the mon, which I'm not, I'm not giving my opinion, we're, we're, I, I want to get this done. My concern would be, do you think we're going to get the two-thirds votes that are required? Because I believe it's not just a simple majority.
No, I believe it's two-thirds, yes, but I think the need was established. A lot of the reason I was really adamant that the, the school committee come here today is to lay this groundwork, to ask these questions, to answer, you know, quell any fears. Your discussion about what has happened in that short amount of time from Rehoboth passing the override, I think is completely appropriate and helpful for people to realize that things are moving along. And I just think this is a good step forward to the peoples, that they know where they're in contact. So I don't personally think that we're going to have a problem, and I think if we come to the, the public and say, yep, we're going to take this out of stabilization, but here's our plan. And, you know, I think people react well to that.
What do we have in the capital account?
The capital one is one point one million, and the, the request at this point is eight hundred and four thousand. But I, I do want to just be careful, because I've heard there may be a bid protest. Is that happening? Because if there is, I don't want us to be short money. So I want to go up, like authorize up to whatever that number needs to be, so you're not coming back, and, and it's just, you have your funding and you're just good to go. You could just, that's why I'm, so if we could have a conversation about the exact number you're looking for to cover all of our bases, and then we can make sure the article is correct.
Pardon me?
No, no problem.
Are you saying ask for a little bit more than what you need, so that there's a, you know, a little bit of a cushion?
Right, and, and just in case.
Has, uh, when was the meeting that you, I know it was when I was away.
It was on a Thursday afternoon, very impromptu, I think it was a Thursday, it might have been a Monday.
They, they all seem to be.
I know everything, what was that? Thank you. So we all, you know, jammed together.
July?
In July, no, Ju, somewhere. Very close to the override.
Must have been around July the fifth, day after the fourth of July.
It's not that day, it was the following week, the following week. And all of our schedules happened to align, they came in and they discussed both proposals. And the finance committee chairman happened to be here in town hall. So he sat in, and we had a full discussion, a good discussion, and raised some concerns about apparatus, you know, medical apparatus and fire apparatus going around the building. It was pretty well done. And then they informed us that they had to go to the school committee and get their vote and their recommendation, and that's what happened, and now they're here.
So has FinCom met? Mr. Schwartz was there, obviously, but the FinCom itself has not.
Correct.
They're waiting to see what the actual article's going to be.
Yes, he has been very much informed, and I believe in contact with you, so he's aware of everything. And he did go to that meeting. So Mr. Schwartz knows what's going on. And I've also talked to him, I gave him these balances. I told him that's my preference to be able to, you know, take now, but sort of like pay ourselves back later with as much free cash as we can.
At the special.
At the, at the, uh, this, this October meeting. And so, you know, later on the agenda, we're asking, because you're asking us to also hold a special town meeting, so we'll discuss that. And just for the sake of this conversation, we're looking at August twenty-first, which is as fast as we can go. But it's also the date that works for everybody, and the school's available. So it's a Tuesday, I know normally they're Monday, but town council was not available on the twentieth. So the twenty-first works for Mr. McKeon, the town moderator, the finance committee chairman, and town council. And we believe with the town clerk, she's out of the, you know, not available to consult with right now, but we looked at her calendar, and there's nothing on there, and the assistant town clerk was confident she could attend.
So I'm a little concerned about giving extra money than what's being asked over here.
Oh, I understand.
So how does that work, then? I mean, who has the final say as to how much this is going to cost? Because I, we're going to be going before the taxpayers, asking for a specific amount of money, which we know what the figure is, a hundred, one point one million, one point one, hundred and four million dollars, and some, and some change. But now we're going to leave it maybe another two hundred thousand dollars. I'm concerned about going before the townspeople and asking.
I agree with that wholeheartedly, and I don't like to be wishy-washing in front of the people, they, you know, they need to know. But I don't want to set up the school to have to come back, because then that's a whole slew of other issues of having another town meeting, getting more money appropriated. So I just want us all to be on the same page now, to know exactly what we need to ask for, so they can go for it. I mean, maybe I'm wrong, and it's just a rumor, I don't know, but.
Well, I'm concerned that we, we may have another two hundred thousand dollars, and sometimes when you, you allocate two hundred thousand dollars or more, people see that, and then will be seeking that, that fund. So I'm, I'm really reluctant to give any more than, than what's actually being asked.
I, I agree with, with Selectman Pacheco. I understand what, what you're saying also. It would seem, in preparing that warrant, we should know for sure what the number, the hard and fast number is. If the hard and fast number is a million two, not a million one, then when we get to town meeting, there has to be an understanding that the hard and fast number that will be acted on will be, if it's one point one, it will be one point one. We will not go to one point two, because we will amend it to a lower amount on town meeting floor. I absolutely agree that we, this is, this is a major capital expense from existing money. And just as we do when we bond with a debt exclusion, it's got to be on the target. So, I mean, it's, quite frankly, we don't spend money from stabilization. And to take this to a town meeting and to ask people to vote, even though the money's sitting there, this is a rare event in the town of Dyton. The last time we took money out of stabilization was to do a, the master plan, sixty thousand dollars. I personally oppose that. It was voted, and we were able to put the money back, and the master plan was done. And that's chicken feed compared to what we're talking about. So going to town meeting, it's got to be on the money, you know.
And, you know, we do already have the three hundred set aside, so I know we're throwing out millions everywhere. It's not draining everything, I, I want everyone to know we're not being flippant about this. But, and again, my, I really do, I would like to see the town put at least half right back in, in October.
And my, my other concern is, is that this is an emergency, this is something we've got to have done right away. And I don't ever want the town to have to go through this, quite frankly, again.
I agree.
You know, we have to have some. You know, we had to have somebody at the town meeting stand up and make a, a motion that we, we provide monies for these modulators and that, that shouldn't happen, we should know beforehand. I understand the context of what happened prior, but, you know, we're building, we were building a new police station that costs money, but let the taxpayers make that decision whether or not they want to spend the money to add to the school, put another building or whatever, because now we're spending one point one million, which I'm in favor of, of spending that money at this point, uh, but we're still, it's a temporary solution. It's, it's three to five years, as, as you pointed out, we may own these modulators, but it's a temporary solution. We should be talking about brick and mortar that if we're going to add to the school. So I, I want to make sure that you, as well as the Dayton Rehoboth School, uh, Regional School Committee is very active in seeing what the needs for this town and Rehoboth as far as the building needs and, uh, are you going to form a committee? Uh, I, I know we got to wait till April, uh, but are you going to form a committee? Uh, or is you're going to be asking the school committee to form a, a committee that rep...
Well, I, I don't care where this, uh, we had already asked that, uh, a year and a half ago to form committees.
So what's happened, though?
Well, I'll tell you what happened, a lot has happened. Uh, first and foremost, uh, we were working out of the capital committee about two and a half years ago. We had a plan in place, but it was sidetracked. And then what we decided to do from there was to send it back to the town of Dayton. We wrote a letter about a year and a half ago to, to form a building committee within Dayton, which happened, uh, it was about six months later, but it happened later. And then that committee, uh, was given a charge that was almost insurmountable and what they came back with was to, um, they recommend, they came back with a recommendation and then that put us out, uh, another year. So what we are, what we're doing and what we continue to do is we have the statement of interest, we have, what we'll have to do is find out what it is that NESDAQ will be recommended and then from there, we can see what kind of building committee that we would need.
Do you mind if I piggyback a little bit off what you just said?
Sure.
Um, the findings of the school buildings study committee are exactly in line with what you're actually doing. As I understand, they dissolved the committee, but in their final recommendation, they recommended that the district contact MSBA. So they're actually doing exactly what the committee charged them, what they were charged with. The other thing is, um, they were, you know, they started to work on a long-term plan, which is exactly what they were charged for, and they quickly realized, like everybody else, that there needs to be some sort of a temporary solution, which you alluded to, which is what the modulators are. Um, and at that point, that's when they realized that, that was kind of, they weren't charged, you know, they weren't, they weren't equipped to deal with something that needed to happen right away. Um, but, but I just want everybody to know what they decided in the long term is exactly the ball that this district has picked up and is now running with. Is that correct?
That is...
Okay.
So whose responsibility then was it to determine whether or not we need modules? If it wasn't this committee, who?
Oh, that's the, the school district, which is exactly what they've decided, that they needed a temporary solution. So it was kind of like the committee and the district converged and they both agreed on that, but the, the study committee that was formed, I mean, that was just volunteers who weren't really equipped, they were trying to study long-term and so when they realized there needed to be a short-term solution, I think they realized very quickly it had to go back to the district. Do you want to add anything? Yeah, Mrs. Kucha.
I think the district and the town need to work together, miss it together.
Absolutely.
We had a committee that was working for the district, we did have finance committee members, um, the towns involved in that, we had school committee members, we had our administration there, as Dr. Azar said, initially it was for ten to twelve, then we had a group of ten or twelve people in a room and you start studying this, then the issues became, well, we're going to pay this much for modulators, oh, what, what it costs us for brick and mortar? And then all the ideas start floating within that committee and we said, now wait a minute, if that's the case, then the town should be taking, we'll get this because it's their charge, it's their building. And let's send this back to the town. And that committee went into play exactly what everyone has said, it was almost as, uh, versus insurmountable and who were the experts there? They were looking to experts that weren't sitting on their committee. We really need this to be a joint effort, um, of, we needed to merge those committees and now get some of these experts involved as well.
May I ask a clarifying question? The letter of intent is with the MSBA in April. Did they partner very much closely with the town? Is that right? That they are sort of those experts to help us through? Is that correct?
That is true.
Okay, I just, thank you. Just wanted to make sure that we had our experts in the wing that are accessible to us.
But I, I just wanted to say, I, to be quite honest, I actually like the idea of a district committee more because now you're synchronizing the needs of Rehoboth with the needs of Dayton and one is not trumping, you know, the other. You're kind of working together to see what's possible, it's actually like that.
And what we're hoping, uh, I mean, actually, uh, all we're hoping for is this outside third-party vendor sort of saying, who does this regularly for school districts will be apostle, uh, to both districts to form a committee of local individuals who have, you know, commitments to the towns. So that's what, ultimately what we'd like to see. So in reference to councilman, uh, councilperson, uh, select, so, oh, no, I know the name, I was trying to get the title. Former Rhode Island state senator, I'm always thinking, you know, councilman, right, so...
So are you planning to form this committee before the April letter or is this something that happens after that?
No, no, actually, the statement of interest with MSBA is one track. We'll see how that plays out. The secondary track is more to what you're asking, is that when we bring NESDAQ in to work with us to, to try to formulate what it is that I need, then that, what we're hoping is that that's where we'll build a committee of individuals, of architects or electrical engineers, uh, from both of our towns. So I think that's in reference to...
And when does that happen, then?
Oh, that's, uh, actually, we hope to bring them forward, uh, either at the August fourteenth or the August twenty-eighth meeting. So pretty much as soon as they're available and we're available. So what, they'll come in and do a presentation, there is a cost factor that the school district will venture into, uh, through, uh, the school committee. I can't, I can't, Simon, yeah, until they give us, uh, the, okay. But I think there is an, to what now, uh, town administrator was saying, uh, there is an appetite for this, whereas two and a half years ago, it was like maybe, actually even prior, the first year I was here, uh, there was, there was a lot of angst even with that reconfiguration of Dayton Elementary School. Because if you go back in time, the town gazette quoted people who didn't even exist, who were against the, the configuration of the, of the, uh, school. And I brought that to the attention of the town gazette because I asked, there were two people who were quoted and I asked them both to come in to talk with us, come see us, what are the concerns? That, no, sorry, we can't make it, we can't do this. And then we had some entrepreneur, uh, computer people check out who these people were and they didn't exist. So it was quite unique, but nevertheless, we were able to get through. And I think a lot of what we've been able to do on the ta- on the, uh, school side is to, to show folks on both, both sides, is that we're consistent. We've never had a superintendent who's going into his fifth year and I think if you recall at graduation, this was the first graduating class for four years who had the same super- not the same principal or the same assistant principal, but the same superintendent who's been consistent, knows the history, not like Nancy, but knows a little bit of the industry that we can now say, hey, wait a minute, no, this is what we're doing, this is why we're doing it and this is where we're going to do it. Uh, and, and then that's part of trying to be transparent. Uh, we did, and that's why we think we were able to pass an override, you know, there's a lot of factors, obviously. A lot of people did a lot of hard work, but if you recall, it was a matter, it was very condensed. It was from June twelfth when we had that school committee meeting and then it formed this, it formed that, it seemed a little too long, but nevertheless, uh, we got the final outcome. So that's what we're hoping for, uh, going forward.
So, if you don't mind me...
No, not at all, not at all.
Who's going in these modules then? What, what grades are going in these modules?
That, that is something that's being discussed at the school level with the principal and the administration and the teachers.
Because you alluded to that June twelfth meeting, I, I'm not sure, it's, I, it may have been, you may have been a school committee member who said that, it, the pre-K and kindergarten was a want and not a need to be going to the elementary school. So what I want to know is, is that part of the plan, that pre-K, uh, kindergarten will be going over, as a result of these six modulators, be going over to the...
Well, what, what's happening is creating options for us. So the principal of the building with the assistant principal will be working on a plan because now this plan, uh, as far as where kids are going to be, we usually send out letters to parents about where their kids are going to be. That's still in the works because right now, we don't know what we're going to have, you know, if this pass, if it doesn't pass, there's another, you know, what if, okay, what if it doesn't pass? Well, then that's what they're working on, what is the best interest of the kids? And if it doesn't pass, then obviously pre-K is out of the, is not an option, that would stay at the high school. If we have the modules, it creates options, will this work, will it not work? And that's something that we, we, I'm not a top-down kind of person, I want to make sure that the people who will be the most impacted in that building makes those decisions, but that's at their level, it's really not at, at this level. Uh, you know, we'll, we'll obviously look over the plan and then present it to the school committee obviously first, but, uh, we, we, we want to make sure that Lynn Dazir and Ashley Follen, working with the teachers in that building, what do you think is in the best interest? Because that's the way it's going to work. I don't want to say to them, okay, you have to do X, Y, and Z, that's just not my style, so...
My only con- I, I hope I'm not alone in this. I think my only concern from what I've heard from, you know, parents who have kids at the elementary school is the reason why they support the modulators is because there's already a space crunch and I would be, I have no say in it, but I would be hesitant to have the pre-K kids, if the modulators get approved, go over immediately into the modular units because I think people will have the perception that part of the reason why people thought they needed the modulators was to get the kids over there. And I think their impression is it's to alleviate a space crunch that already exists. So they're going to be confused, why are you, it's simple osmosis, why are you moving kids into a cr- into a space crunch? Uh, so, I mean, I know, I know you would respond.
Like I said, you know, people have to entrust the people who are the professionals to do what's in the best interest of kids. I just know that a lot of parents don't particularly like having their preschool kids at the high school. It's just a, an unfortunate situation because of space and if we're able, uh, it's going to be considered. I, I don't think we want to take anything off the table and, and be so, you know, caught up in, in, okay, no, we shouldn't do that because of, you know, and even if it's in the best, well, this looks like it's in the best interest because the experts are saying, you know, something, this works or if it doesn't work, or, because right now, the Rehoboth preschool will be in Rehoboth, uh, come, uh, September. We've already, and, and we're not talking a lot of ki- I mean, we're not talking, you know, a lot, we're, I think we're maybe in the third, thirty, thirty students or so or thereabouts. So, so it creates options. I don't want to be emphatic to say to you right now because I want to be fair to the folks at Dayton Elementary School because as we go forward, uh, we don't know what's going to happen at the middle school. Will those modulators then become fifth grade? You know, within the next five years, if the bubble at the elementary school kind of bursts, that's why we need this outside vendor, NESDAQ, they do a lot of the enrollment figures that you see in, in our presentations. So it'd be very difficult for anyone to say other than, let's, let's consider all options. And, and if it doesn't work out, then there's a place where preschool will stay at that school for, you know, for as long as it takes until maybe the bubble will burst, we'll have that opportunity. Because as you recall, I want to say, three years ago, when the, the SWAT team was on site at the high school, it was probably, it was just so traumatic that I wore my, my Dayton El- my, my Dayton, my, uh, my DR jacket, which I've never worn, to make sure those SWAT team members knew that I was actually, you know, part of the, the faculty there. You know, with the tree lines, the, it was just, it was just traumatic and this is when kids were being dropped off. We have Atlas training that is not endemic to preschool kids. Uh, we have VP moving their preschool out of their high school into a new, new building. Uh, the other thing about preschool parents is that they go through the process of being in the high school for one year and then when do they go? They go to the elementary school. So you don't hear, you don't see a, the place packed with preschool, uh, parents because once, you know, they go through the process and, you know, they get an all call that, oh, we got a lockdown, we got this and they're like, you know, then of course, you know, it's, it's just, uh, important to realize that. Let, let's let the experts figure out what, what's going to be in the modules. We've all, I think we've all agreed that we, we need something, so, you know, here we are, but it's a legitimate question, there's no question about that piece.
I, I appreciate you just not say, you know, saying what you think we might want to hear, so I actually appreciate that a lot.
I think, I think the educational theory is fine. I understand it completely. However, the reality of the situation is, we went to the townspeople in Dayton and said we have overcrowding at the elementary school. When the preschool was mentioned, the first response that I heard was, are they out of their minds when the houses, you got the house full of your relatives, you don't invite more in, you got to deal with what you've got. So when you think about what it is that was presented to the people in Dayton, we have an overcrowding system at the elementary school. For right now, forget preschool, we're going to talk about what's physically present that's creating this overcrowded situation. There were people who remembered past presentations, we got a bubble. The question was, what if it happened to the bubble? Because it should have been moving along and it should have been over at the other school by now. So do we have a new bubble coming along because of increased enrollment that, so we got it out of the fifth grade and it's now at the middle school or the fourth grade? We got another bubble and now this one's in the lower grades and it's moving forward. The, in looking at what we ask, and I mean everybody, school department, board of selectmen, town officials, what we asked the town, uh, people in Dayton to do was to authorize these modular classrooms, or we're going, you know, that's what was presented and we're headed for that for an August town meeting. They are going to want to know, tell us what's going on right now. If down the road, so my personal opinion is, you know what, deal with the problem you have right now, which means for maybe another year, the preschool stays where it is. History. When State told us we had to have public kindergartens, what are we going to do in Dayton? Because we don't have any room. It's sitting out here on the hill, okay? That was the solution for kindergarten and it stayed there until, quite frankly, the junior high burned down and we built a new middle school, which gave us room. And that's when we moved the kindergarten into the elementary and we went with a four, four-four system, you know? All of that worked. When you say, well, there's a, there's a, there's a chance or there's rumors or there's something that we may move the preschool children in, my point is, let it sit for a year, show the people in Dayton you're going to address the problem you brought before them at town meeting, which was overcrowding at the elementary school. As I said, I understand the educational theory, absolutely I understand it. But if you initially, and when I say you, I mean school administration, principals, whatever, when you look at what was presented, to me, deal with exactly what was brought to the people for the first year. You get your modulators, you get space freed up, you get smaller classrooms, you got three teachers, you got a place to put them and you got a place for the students, they're going to teach. In the meantime, you're going to be looking, just like we were umpteen years ago, because eventually, again, those were only temporary, all right? Umpteen years later, we're using them for something else. But the fact of the matter is, there was always that thought and we were trying to get a new junior high school and if it hadn't burned down...
Right.
You know, which was actually a blessing. But in any case, all of these things, when you present them to the townspeople and taxpayers and it's ka-ching, if you don't address the issue you brought forward as, this is the main problem we got, overcrowding right now at the elementary school.
Well, the good news...
That's the thing you have to think about. And as I say, it doesn't preclude you in a future year or whatever, just like we did over here, as the space was determined, we got space, we're going to build that school, we're going to reallocate the grades. That was fully acceptable, simply because initially, the, uh, school committee did exactly what they said they were going to do, all right? We're going to build that middle school, we're going to move that fifth grade, we're going to put that kindergarten. Talking about the natural progression of childhood education, absolutely, the kindergarten children belonged in that elementary school. So all I'm saying to you is, the kind of things that you're hearing from my colleagues, this is, this is general talk out there. And this is from people who support and will vote to fund this. But I'm saying to you, when you go to that special town meeting, don't come in with, oh, we're going to do this and we're going to do that because that's not what you did. And I'm not picking on anybody. You, meaning the, the general you. It is not what was done at the annual town meeting, both sessions, until we finally got a solution at the second night. You got to do what you tell the people you're going to do. You lose no options. For the first year, people have to understand you are going to do what you said you were going to do, okay? And as, as you get your study with NESTIC coming in and you send that, uh, contact, uh, school billing, all of this stuff is good because once you get that data from NESTIC, you can then say, and by the way, folks, this is the projection. And what we see happening is, whether it's bringing the preschool, now, we can do this because we have actual data. Residents of Dayton, parents of Dayton. We have the data to show now exactly what we can do. So I just caution you, we're going into a, a town meeting. We're going to need a two-thirds vote to get this money. So, and I am not trying to interfere with decisions made at the schools. But I'm saying to you, educational progression, absolutely, in a timely manner. So that's all I'm saying to you is, because those who support you will continue to support you. And it's really important so that everybody understands. You can still do the looking, you will still have the data, and you're going to have, I'll call it expert research, NESTIC. Okay? So that's all I'm saying, okay?
My only thing, Dr. Azar.
Yeah.
We, I, I think, I don't want to speak for my colleagues, but I think we support it. I think the people support it. And I just want to make sure that we're not, you know, clutching defeat from the jaws of victory. Because I do think there will be people who will change their vote if they found out that there's even the possibility that the pre-K students will be moved over there. I'm just being honest.
Okay, the thing is, if you look at the calendar, we're in July. If we're looking at the town meeting, how, by August 21st? By the 21st, we will have, we, we will have what we need through the eyes of the Dayton Elementary School folks. And then we can present it as, as such. Tonight, you asked me, I can't be definitive about it. It's an option, it's on the table. And it would be a disservice to the administrative team at Dayton Elementary School if I said, X, Y, and Z, you're right, it's not going to happen. When they're looking at it, is it, is it a possibility? I can't take that off the table.
Do you have one question about that?
And I'm, and I am not trying to interfere with their ability to assess their needs. I am pointing out something that is, if you, you can call it a political issue, you can call it a whatever issue. I'm just saying, this has to be brought to the people in Dayton so that when they hear the presentation, it's like, oh yeah, that's what they said they were going to do and this is what we're voting on. I just caution you.
So what happens if we get preschool parents who really wanted to be considered? I mean, they're Dayton kids. You know, we really want you to consider getting our kids out of the high school. That's, that's what I'm saying, that those are considerations for preschool parents who are, you know, Dayton residents, who also should be heard. And, and that's really the other side of, of the issue.
This is also, it's like.
Doesn't preclude that, simply because down the road, you can do it. That is not what you brought to the people in Dayton. You brought overcrowding at that building over there. With the intent of maybe down the road, you can bring it, and you're not losing. You can still do that. And when I say you, I mean, your, your, your administrative group. The school department can still do that. That has not gone away. The urgency, the, moving the pre-K out of the high school, it's not the same urgency as the overcrowdiness that all of those parents and all of those children are facing at the elementary. And that's what, that's what I'm saying. People are looking at.
So just, um, this point is slightly moot just because there's a timeline associated with this. Because when, when are they even go? So everything happens, right? We have our town meeting, they vote to have the town meeting on August 21st. What is, what is the timeline we're looking at for installation? Because are you gonna?
Oh, the timeline that we put, uh, when we sent the addendum out, um, I put a substantial completion date of November 22nd, which was right before Thanksgiving.
And would you, you wouldn't move kids mid-year or mid, mid semester? I'm thinking you'd do it in January or, you know, when, before the start of the third quarter.
The Christmas break.
So, okay, thank you.
So anyway, they wouldn't move if they were going to until?
They wouldn't move until?
Yeah, the new year.
So there's plenty of, okay, thank you.
Mr. Jefferson, school committee member.
I've come in as a former, I wasn't planning on coming in, the school committee passed it twice. I mean, that house, and I had a lot of questions. Where, as a former person on the school capital committee, I'm a little curious where this conception is coming that six classrooms is not enough? Because when we decided to send six to the town, that was to support well. And you'll recall Rachel Lyfer at that, that July 12th meeting said, people don't think six is enough, we should be buying more than six. But people don't realize, last year, we let three teachers go. There were three classrooms. They didn't just magically disappear, those classrooms are still there. So we're adding those three teachers back. Yes, we've transitioned STEAM and different things. But even that, we're adding six classrooms. Um, so I don't know where this fear, this misconception is that if preschool was, and again, I'm just speaking like Dr. Azar is watching it as we're coming back from meeting. Um, no one's made these decisions yet, but I feel people have this, like, it's the worst thing if they decide to. If the administration and the people that, as we said at our last school committee in there, we paid to make these educational decisions, decide preschool should move. You should. That we decided to vote for six, um, and recommend six to the town because that supports it. The other thing people need to consider as well, um, I'm sure people are familiar with how the regional agreement and all the assessment works.
I wouldn't assume that.
Rehoboth schools. So just think of the cost of, now we have thirty extra high school kids because the pre-K is included in the high school enrollment. So now, you think, where, I'm sure, I mean, we've had the eighth grade when the school burned down. I'm sure Rehoboth could say, hey, we know that the, you know, modulars may be getting in place come July 1st. We're not going to charge you that assessment, you know? Under certain circumstances, we have the ability to say that. But, you know, I'm a little, if I'm here now as voter, we don't think six is enough, then we shouldn't be buying six. But in my opinion, as someone that was on this capital committee, and five to ten years for that school, that gives that school, a five-track school at every grade level, gives it room for two or three preschools, and it gives it room to put some specialists in. So I'm just curious where this conception is coming from that six is going to be enough. I mean, obviously, we miss, they're not going to be in place for September 1st. Um, but, you know, I just am a little concerned on why everyone is, preschool is not going to be, there, there isn't enough room there to support that.
How I would respond to your, and, and I appreciate you coming in and stating that. I can't possibly answer your question because I'm not in the mind of every resident that lives in Dayton. What I will say is, as my colleagues have stated, we came, we came to the people and we said, we have a space crunch. We need more space. Please approve these modular units. You would agree that that happened, right? So I'm talking about, and I know this is tough, but you're an elected official, you understand perception. It is the perception that we asked for more space and now we're filling more sp, we're filling that space that was approved with kids who weren't previously there.
Yeah, but people should understand, we approved that space under the assumption that those kids would move there. So I guess if the message.
No, that's not true.
Okay, so then there's a disconnect there because that, we, there is no, we, when we discussed adding, recommending six, that was under the assumption preschool.
But who gave that assumption? Mr. Jefferson, the article was not even read by a school committee member. So when did you give people this perception?
Are you talking about, well, the article is read at the first town meeting, wasn't about the number of, it was a dollar, right?
But you're saying you gave people a perception, or there is a perception. So when was that, when was the perception given that the pre-K students? Because it's still not even decided.
Right, so what I'm saying, what I'm telling you is, from my perspective, when, and when we had made the discussions that.
Who's we? Mr. Jefferson.
The capital, okay, so the capital committee, well, first capital, but when the school committee ultimately made that first one to lease, the discussion was six because it would support if preschool moved there.
When was that said, Mr. Jefferson?
When was that even, I mean, we, we had that meeting.
I read the minutes.
Right.
That the town clerk made from the town meeting.
But I'm talking town meeting, when the school committee made the recommendation that we were going to send six to lease, we made, and, for our meetings, they should be online. I'm saying, I'm not saying it to you, but I sat there and I said the same thing. This is the minimum of what we need to support preschool. Because like you, if we went for ten, people in the town would be like, oh, we don't need to go for a long-term solution. This is going to get us by. But it was, we discussed, the school committee discussed and stated that we were recommending six. Now, if there was some translation left, lost when it made it to the town, that wasn't, I mean, okay, I don't know who was apologizing for that. But when, I'm just speaking for me as a committee and I think the rest of us will be, I mean, me as a member, and we discussed that. Six was the recommendation to support what we know, making that school a five-track school. We know we had three classrooms that were emptied out last year. So this, this year, even with those modules, that school's going to have nine extra classrooms than it had last year. Granted, I know last year, it was the Band-Aid solution from three years ago. But what I'm just saying is, maybe there's a disconnect where, like you're saying, people didn't know that the recommendation was to support five. Maybe that message needs to be cleared up and maybe at that town meeting, someone needs to explain that, but.
School committee should be saying that, correct? We, one second. My response to you on that is, unless you've sent a communique to every resident in town that this was your plan, I, you understand why people don't know that that was the plan, right? Because nobody was at that meeting, Mr. Jefferson.
Well, right.
So why would you expect people to know? You know, you were looking at an empty audience. So where did you find?
Right, but I guess.
Played in Dayton.
So I guess that, that Rehoboth committee, uh, school committee means played in Dayton, per Channel 98.
Okay, I didn't even know that.
Mr. Jefferson, this is exactly why I said what I said a few minutes ago. What was presented at the town meeting and what got approved, the three hundred thousand that was agreed to be set aside, dealt with the six classrooms, and there was no definite decision on pre-K. And as we heard tonight, pre-K is still, at the present time, at DR. There is no definite, absolute, positive agreement on the administration at the elementary school or the superintendent's office administration. They are definitely going to move. And all I'm saying is, because of the perception out there and because of the people who have supported this proposal, bring it into town meeting at the least special, the way people have the perception. You lose nothing if, in a year from now, because it's going to be, if it's, let's say it is the second semester. Really, are you going to move them for one semester? When you could say, you know what, we're planning ahead and in September of 2019, we will have, everything worked out, we will have the data from NESTIC, and this is the projected enrollment and we can now move. Or if the data comes back, no, we can't move them. But the fact of the matter is, I support this.
Me too.
I don't want to sit at the town meeting and have people say, does anybody know what the school department is doing? Do they know what they're doing? That is not a criticism. I am trying to point out, come in with what you asked for. As you said when you started, you asked the people of Dayton for something and it's something that they will support? And they know you're going to do exactly what you asked them, them, for the money for? They will support you. We want this town meeting to hopefully flow. We want, hopefully.
It's a pass.
A majority of people, two-thirds, vote this money so we can address this issue. And all I'm pointing out is, please, we went through two sessions of a town meeting. The, with the first one, when it ended, knowing we were going to the next one, we were sitting and looking at one another and saying, does anybody know what that was about? What, what, what is the school department asking us for? By the time we got to the second meeting, and even Mr. Swatz got up and to discuss things, what we were looking for is, quite frankly, there's six rooms here, this is what I'm going to support. And I'm going to have faith and trust that the school administration is going to act in the best interests of all of the parents, even if it means the pre-K up, up there for another year. But also to address all of the issues that came up at the town meeting that all of the parents with children over there, uh, are concerned about. Please, we don't want to muddy the water with more what-ifs. You should have done this or you should have done that. This is the proposal, folks. Six rooms, all the data's here. That's what we've been asked to support. And that's what's before this board tonight. So that's all I'm saying.
I just wanted to respond to Mr. Jefferson and then I'm going to let Town Administrator Aaronstein speak. Mr. Selectman Pacheco can give his final words, Selectman Goulart, and then we'll tidy this up. It sounds like we all support it, so you don't have an issue here. I'm not even saying that they shouldn't, the pre-K students shouldn't be over there. That's not what I'm saying. My concern is getting it passed. So I want to, uh, create the least amount of waves and not rock the boat so that this is a sure thing. Because we all would agree, right, that this has to happen.
Right, and I agree, and I, it's a point, you know, same thing. I've been keeping this drone for years. But the point, I, I'm a little concerned, I'd like a hearing where people think that six, if six isn't going to get us through for the next five, 10 years, then we have a problem. Like, I'm just reiterating, and again, maybe there was some translation loss. But when this was discussed and the school committee recommended six, it was that would support the six, a five-track school, preschool, if, again, but it was to support preschool. Because again, we don't want to, we didn't want to just do two or four. But like I said, it's, this was the expected thing. But again, I just caution too that, you know, people in Dayton, if, you know, thirty people are at the high school for an assessment, this is going to be a large shift in capital assessment and operating costs. So, um, that's one thing to consider, you know, because that's how the high school enrollment is calculated, but.
I appreciate you coming down here.
You know, another thought is, if in fact, the Rehoboth pre-K goes to Rehoboth, now you just have Dayton pre-K students? Don't count them as part of the enrollment, consider them tuition students. And have Dayton pay for those students separately, like we used to do when we really had tuition students. It's one thing when you have a joint program with the two towns. When only one town is sending children, it's like in the old days when Berkeley was over here in, at Dayton-Rehoboth. They become tuition students. So that the amount of money that would be used to educate those children while they're in that building, you come up with a tuition rate. So that way, the, the district as a whole, the town of Rehoboth, is not impacted by the fact that there are Dayton children in that building and the Rehoboth kids are back in Rehoboth. It, it can be done, all right? Again, we want to get this thing passed.
We have time. If we stick with the August 21st, we also have at least one school committee meeting. And we have time to let the Dayton Elementary School, uh, administration work on what their plan is. Because their plan has to be spot on on September 1st.
Right.
Kids are coming.
Right.
And preschool's not involved at all on September 1st. And then if the modules get put up, uh, in November or whenever, then we have to take the Dayton Elementary School plan and move whomever they think is in the best interest kid-wise, education-wise.
Exactly.
So to your point, actually all your points, is that by August 21st, we, as a school district, will have a plan. And if preschool's included, then we have to be honest and transparent as to how that's going to work. And if they're not included, then they're not included. And then we can discuss with the school committee about that tuition piece that you just did. I think that's a, a great idea overall. And then it gets everyone to where they need to be. And then we work on those two parallel committees, SOI. And as far as who's doing what, when, and how, we all know that. So I think August 21st is a great opportunity to get everything in place. Because by that, by August 21st, as a school district and parents, parents have to know where their kids are going. September 1st. You know, and if, if the preschool is staying at the high school, those parents need to know that a little bit further. You know, I mean, closer, uh, to, to the now than, than the later, so. So there's no pushback in that regard.
And if those Dayton children stay there for a year and they're handled as tuition students, there is no concern at all on the part of Rehoboth that we are paying to educate Dayton students. That problem goes away for that, that group of children.
Okay, something.
So we are, as you've just described, on a very tight schedule and we have some work to do as far as setting the date. So these are the votes that, and I need the exact cost that you're looking for. And I'd be looking for the board of selectmen to authorize. So you're going to set the town meeting date in place. Uh, and time. Open the meeting and allow me to craft the article that's going to show up on it and then close it on the same night. And then you're going to give yourselves, you, you need to make a motion to authorize yourselves to sign that warrant. We have to post this by August 7th, which we don't have another meeting until August 8th.
But can't we just have a special?
If you'd like. If you'd like. I just don't like to commit people if I don't know their schedules.
Well, you have to do what you have to do, so.
So that's all the stuff that needs to be done. What is the exact cost you're looking for, for us to authorize?
It was a proposal there.
There is an exact figure, and Chairwoman Kucher gave that figure at the meeting.
Does that include the three, is that taking off the three hundred thousand that's already been appropriated or no?
Well, you would just subtract the three hundred, you know what I mean?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, absolutely. Mr. Akia.
Yes, I was going to ask that, uh, if you can give it up for the speaker. There were two proposals given to us. We.
We, one complete proposal here, we never was given information on the second one, but I did want your opinion as to which one is the best. Sure, hello, Dayton, I looked at both proposals. Both are code-complying buildings, they have different configurations. I actually went to the site and laid this one out with Facilities Director Nappy. I think it works better with the property, the location of the buildings. Doesn't create any corners, dead ends, things of that nature, so I'm in support of this, this, this proposal. I do have a question, though, regarding money. When we looked at the initial plans, there were a couple of code-compliance issues that came into place, and I haven't looked at the full set of drawings, I looked at those on the permit issue. But have you taken into consideration some of those build-offs that need to be done? Because of the exit discharge areas, things like that?
Yeah, I reviewed the exit discharge with the, with the vendor, and he's well aware that that would have to happen immediately, to keep that, to keep that E-BUS, absolutely.
Thank you. May I make one additional suggestion? Or actually, let me ask a question before I make any suggestions, and then we'll, we'll tidy this up. I understand that there's a heavy learning theory that goes into studying whether the pre-K students should move to the elementary school, and I respect that 100%. I wouldn't, I wouldn't negate that, but I would hope that they would balance the learning theory with what's actually practical. So will Mr. Nappy or Mr. Aguirre be involved in those discussions? Or is this just gonna be a discussion made on theory?
I don't understand the question.
So the, what we're discussing tonight, or what we did discuss, was, we don't know yet if the pre-K students will move over. So that is a decision that will be made by the administration at Dayton Elementary, correct?
Yeah, in conjunction with...
Okay, that, that was my question.
Yeah, and Dave's part of Central Office, so.
Okay, that was my question.
And, and if you requ, oh, I'm sorry, if I may, if you're not aware of this, just to give you an idea about the educational theory and people being involved, we do our district learning walk six times a year, which means the administrative team goes in and out of classrooms. We have a rubric to follow. And one of the administrative team is our business manager, Catherine Antonellis, who accompanies us with the educational folks, and there are often times where she will look up and say, oh, ballast is out, where, you know, it's a little, it's a little dock in that room, that's not really gonna do so. So, so to your point, yes, stakeholders, our administrative team, Dave, Dave is part of those discussions regularly. Sometimes one is why he's part of those discussions, but...
Well, you know, I'm not there, so I just...
It's the environment, and, and I think what you've seen readily on the, the Rehoboth side and the Dayton side, with the facilities, with, and now the high school with the roof, the windows that Beck with, and, and the new roof on Palma River, and the buckets that caught all the water at the high school, the, we have to make sure our environment is set, and the only way to do that is have the experts, just like we want, as a select person, Pacheco had indicated, about if we do have, and when we do have a building committee, have the right people on it, the architects, the engineers, these people who are committed. So, so yes, facilities is very important, and I think we've proven that with our relationship with training and how we utilize our business manager. So to your point, yes.
Absolutely, thank you, Dayton.
So the total cost of 1,104,000, are there other numbers in there? Is there something after that?
I thought it wasn't even, I can't remember correctly.
Say some change.
Yeah, there is some change.
Okay, what our town administrator needs is, what is the total cost minus the 300,000 that we've already set aside?
That is correct.
That's the number we need for that warrant.
I looked through here.
I don't, I don't have it. I know the numbers that we have discussed, but I don't, I don't want any room for error because a warrant article was miswritten, so just tell me what you need.
We'll clarify that with you tomorrow with Catherine.
Okay.
I know you have it, 'cause it was read at the meeting, so I know you have it.
So we're not gonna vote on a figure tonight, then?
If we're having a meeting next week?
If we're having another meeting next week, yeah, then we can, so we'll do that. So you'll vote to close?
Okay.
We have one at the crack of dawn, 'cause you don't, you don't leave the house till what?
I leave at 7:00.
Oh, you leave at 7:00?
I'm early.
6:30.
'Cause the latecomers are...
I guess I'll sleep over the night before.
All right, we have taken up a lot of your time this evening, do you have anything?
Yes, so I need, you'll, will need to vote to call a special town meeting, set the date.
Okay, that's still on the agenda, what do we need to do about this right now?
This is all tied into it, and they're gonna work with me on a figure. We'll craft the article, and if we're having a special meeting, then I can bring that to you next week.
Okay, and you're okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. You'd rather be accurate, right?
Just need to know the money, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we take Agenda Item 8A1 out of order.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, motion passes.
Okay, the article that I mentioned is the, to set the town meeting date in place. So, Mr. Chairman, I move that we set the date for the special town meeting to be Tuesday, August 21st, maybe 7:00 P.M.
We have the room from 6:00 to 9:00, so...
Wait, is, is it the middle school?
The high school.
No, it's high school.
At Dayton-Rehoboth Regional High School.
We have a motion.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second, further discussion? Hearing none, let's take it to a vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, the motion passes. Before we do any further voting, I just wanted to say to the residents, you weren't on the board at the time, Mr. Selectman Pacheco, but I know, I know you were supportive. My colleague, Selectman Goulart, and I committed at that meeting to holding this special town meeting, so we are holding true to our word, so we appreciate everybody's support on this matter. Are we going back to this presentation?
Do we, is there anything else we? Oh, I, I just wanted to ask, Mr. Aguirre, was the fire chief involved with any of this work? Are your...
Yes, he wa, he was not part of that meeting, but Mr. and I have had...
Was, has he had a chance, he knows what they're planning, is he okay?
Yes.
All right, okay, thank you.
Did you have anything else? I thought you were standing up, so I apologize.
Yeah, no, I just, I just, I don't wanna take any more time. I just wanna let you know, as was Selectman, that Mr. Nappy and I have a great relationship, and we stayed, opened dialogue throughout all this process and any other processes going through the school, so we have a good relationship with the school department.
Great, so they'll keep you, you both will be cute, and, perfect, perfect. Anything else, not an administrator, Selectman Pacheco?
Not on this presentation, but I have more town meeting stuff.
So just for clarification, then, we're gonna be meeting next week to actually vote on the warrant itself?
Correct.
Right.
Okay.
Let's set that up. Good day.
So next Wednesday?
I was just thinking August 1st, which is next Wednesday.
Okay.
Same time, same place, 7:30.
Seven thirty, could, it's...
Seven o'clock?
Is, is there any way to do it a little earlier?
When can you get there? How soon can you get there?
I can be here.
It's all right with me, 6:30?
May I, I'll be here 6:30.
We'll get, we'll get out of here early.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we call a special meeting of the Board of Selectmen on Wednesday, August 1st, at 6:30 P.M.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second, and that works for you, Madam Administrator?
Yes, yes, Wednesday's I belong to Dayton.
Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, let's take it to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, and the motion passes.
The last thing on this is, you just need to open the meeting warrant. I recommend that this be the only item, just due to the lengthy discussion, and it's in kind of an awkward time, and that you open the meeting warrant and that you plan to close it on the 1st.
August the 1st?
August 1st, when you sign.
You want us to open it, say, tomorrow?
You can open it today, 'cause I can get, I mean, well, whatever you, there's only a few hours left in the day, doesn't matter.
Someone's gonna try to get their warrant article in tonight at midnight.
It'll be in my office, this is my article.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we open the warrant for the special town meeting on August 21st.
I'll second that motion.
The warrant, the warrant, bleh. The date for the opening of the warrant is Thursday, July 26th, and the closing date for that warrant is Wednesday, August 1st.
At 12:00 P.M.
At 12, 12:00 P.M. That's 12 noon.
Get 'em in.
I'll second, I'll second that motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, let's take it to a vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, and the motion passes.
Thank you for coming and explaining that.
Thank you, very much, nice meeting you.
And what I will say to you is, when you get ready to...
Thank you, Mr. Jefferson.
When is their next meeting? Do you know when the next meeting is?
Oh, Miss, Chairwoman Kucher?
Yes.
And Superintendent Azar, I know this is a little off-topic, I swear, we're gonna let you go, okay?
Yep.
I requested to have, be, have something be placed on the agenda, do you know if we're gonna be doing that this month?
We're dealing with that in our first August meeting.
All right, perfect, well, I'll be there.
What is the date and time of that meeting?
August 14th, 6:30.
Thank you.
So we're gonna meet for our agenda, and that should be...
That's correct.
Thank you, yeah, and for the public who thinks our meetings are long, attend a school committee meeting.
No, watch it from the comfort of your own home.
Thank you, all, thank you. All right, we are going to begin with public input for those who aren't asleep, and before I open it up to the public, we did have a public health alert, and it's kinda getting late, so I do wanna read this for anyone who's still paying attention. This is from the Dayton Board of Health, and this is something that was emailed, we posted it online, so I just wanted to read it tonight. "An individual was recently bitten by a raccoon in the area of Main and Water Street. Although raccoons are not normally aggressive, for your safety, we suggest that you not approach any raccoon if seen. Below are the five most common signs of a rabid raccoon: acting disoriented, seeming partially paralyzed or sick, walking unsteadily or moving without apparent purpose, foaming at the mouth, chattering is normal, but other sounds are not. Here are some behaviors exhibited by both healthy and rabid raccoons. Being out during the daytime is totally normal, however, exercise caution, as raccoons don't have a fear of humans, and raccoons have become urban animals like squirrels. They have absolutely no fear of people. If you have any questions, please contact our Animal Control Officer, Stacy Ferry, at 774-218-5340." And at this time, does anyone's...
Chairman, I just wanna mention, after this incident happened, there was an individual at Lincoln Village who was also bitten by a raccoon, and they don't believe it's the same raccoon. So it's just something you have to be aware of, if you live in the area around Lincoln Village, be alert, be careful with your own animals, and if you see a raccoon that's acting strangely, please call Mrs. Ferry.
And don't go to pet it, please.
No, I'll feed it.
In that same vein, I have some public input, because there are, aren't you glad you're not the Board of Health anymore? So there are a couple of food recalls that the Board of Health has asked us to advertise to you all. There's something going on with my printout here. These are also posted online under the Board of Health page, under, if you go on the left-hand navigation, you'll see a place for announcements, and they're all listed right there, if you hover over it, they'll come up. But Ritz crackers, certain Ritz cracker sandwiches and Ritz Bits products in the United States, including Puerto Rico and the United States Virgin Islands, due to possible health risks, have been recalled. And there's a whole, you know, different various bag sizes, cartons, which is mostly the mixed cookie cracker variety, all, there's a handful, actually, probably, I don't know, 15. So that's listed online, I'm not gonna read them all, because you're not gonna remember them, so go online. The other one is Hormel Foods Corporation recalled canned pork and chicken products as a possible foreign matter contamination, that foreign matter is metal, so...
Mention anything about the beef stew? I need to know. Asking for a friend.
Yes, so one of these, unfortunately, is, I can't see it, because there's some weird overprinting. So, I'm sorry, I don't know. But another one is the black label luncheon loaf with a Best Buy February 2021 date, and then it lists various production codes. But most of these were shipped to Guam only, so if you haven't been to Guam, I think you're safe. Another one, the one that I can't see was shipped to, let's see if, it's spam, I think. But anyway, double-check that, that's also on the website.
There's a problem with the spam?
The spam container, and there's something on my email that I can't read, and I'm sorry.
Is that virtual spam?
No, this is the real spam.
That has the meat, yeah.
It's the mystery meat in the can. The other one that's been on television, along with the Ritz products, is Pepperidge Farm Goldfish.
Yep.
I walked into Shop and Shop last night, and there was a big display of goldfish packages, you know, buy five for $10 or something. I did a double take, and I'm thinking, what is this? Because they were recalling all of those and telling people not to eat them, but goldfish, yeah. The problem is whey, that they've used in both the Ritz and in the Pepperidge Farm cheese products, crackers, whatever, and they think it's contaminated, I think it's Listeria.
Oh, great, that's not a good one.
But it's, but it's a problem.
Okay, thank you. Yes, one more, sorry, and we'll go quickly. Dayton Fire Department, this is good news, Local 4332. This information's on the Dayton Fire Department's website, or, excuse me, Facebook page, so if you are interested, go there, and it has all this information, and of course, you can call or check in with us, and we'll give you the information. They are, they have a mission of promoting education, the Dayton Fire Department, and they're proud to announce the first annual EMT Basic Scholarship. The goal of this scholarship is to assist those desiring to begin a career in emergency medical services by becoming an EMT. The scholarship will provide one qualified applicant who shows a commitment to the profession, the funding support needed in order to achieve this goal. I'm just gonna interrupt myself and say, great job to the Dayton Fire Association, 'cause this is an awesome thing, I think. The qualifications, they must demonstrate a strong desire to pursue emergency medicine, must be between the ages of 18 and 24, and must be a resident of the town of Dayton. And there's just some application requirements and information about the ward process, so please do check that out if you're interested, and again, thank you to the firefighters in charge of that, 'cause that's, that's great, that's a great community thing.
Thank you, very much.
Feel like a reporter.
Private investigator. Do we have any public input, Mr. Higgins, Mr. Ferry, Mr. Aguirre?
No.
All right, thank you. All right, so at this time, I'm going to give the floor to our town administrator for her report.
Okay, mine's very brief, these are literally just quick updates.
But good things.
Good things, the Policy Review Board that I can't seem to stop talking about, we finally have our first meeting. It's August 6th, and we'll get started, I have a whole plan on how to make this the most efficient. And again, just a thank you to all of those people who have stepped up to work this out with us. It's, you know, we need the help, and it's great, and I'm happy that they're all involved, so that's good. So that's August 6th, that's coming up. And a bit of a procurement update, every time Tom Ferry comes by, I get more work. But there are some scopes of services out there, and I just wanted to let you know that these will be coming up. So the first is network support services for IT. We are, I'm actually meeting with two companies tomorrow to go through and try to figure out how we can have an administrative company take over from what we have now. And the other is tree thinning at the town forest, there's some diseased trees, some hazardous trees, and they'll be taking care of that, so that's up and running with Mr. Ferry, our tree warden. And there are some others in the works, as I said, every time he swings by, there's another one. But those will be before you too, and that's all I have for my report.
And you are making progress with the TIF board as well, so.
Oh, yes.
You are crazy busy, but there's a lot of good things happening, so thank you very much.
Absolutely.
At this time, we'll move on to old business, and we have the recommendations on municipal operations. We already did the first item, which was selling items. So what I'm gonna do, because we have a lot of different subcategories here, and there's a lot of stuff to go through, I'm gonna throw the floor over to you, I'm gonna let you go through what you think we need to go through tonight.
Okay, so, let us go down the list quickly, passports and the department head meetings. We actually reached out at, the next day was a department head meeting, and we talked to them, and thank you to Jocelyn Dvaras, the library director, she's actually looking for somebody who would be interested in taking on passports at the library, and this would be in addition to the services we have here at Town Hall. But what I love about this is, not only are we gonna get more people into the library, which is a good thing anyway, but they are open on Fridays and Saturdays, and we are not. And that's just an expanded service to an already well-taken-advantage service. So she's looking into that, I, I'm respectfully requesting that you don't make a decision on this until we have more of that information, but that's in the works, and then...
We can't act on department head meetings?
Oh, that's just passports, I was just about to get to department.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
So Selectman Goulart had requested that we reach out to the department heads and how they felt, and that's fine, you know? That's great, I think we should all be on the same page and unified anyway, and I welcome communication like that. And so they, it, the majority was that it remain Selectman meetings.
What are you doing in those meetings, no, I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding, okay, that's fine.
But I would... But I would, my only comment is, I would actually, not that Karen doesn't do a great job, but I'm trying to not take her away from her desk.
And have her have to do notes.
So, I can easily take the notes there. I know that Selectman Goulart writes notes. I think between the two of us, we can cover it. So, if you're okay with that, it would just alleviate Karen a little bit and give her one last set of minutes to do. And I, you know, we can handle it on that end.
The feeling was that the department heads and the Board of Selectmen, it's an opportunity for them to interact and as Mr. Pacheco said, that he's attended some of them before. And that, that connection, they would like that to stay that way, so.
Alright, we'll respect that, absolutely. We already acted on-
So, do we need a motion on Karen?
I don't think so.
No.
No.
Just don't go, Karen.
You're not allowed to leave.
Don't show up.
I know, I miss you guys. Yeah, for the department heads who, for whatever reason, are watching this right now, yeah, I'm still not gonna go. I can't, I'm sorry.
They're in spirit. Nobody sits in the chair, so that's-
Yeah, we already acted on that.
We already acted on procurement. The meeting schedule, I think, is something we can tackle tonight. I have proposed meeting, I said every other week, but actually, we need to revise that because meeting every other week ends up messing with the whole schedule because some weeks, some months have multiple, more than just the four. So, maybe the first and third or second and fourth Wednesdays of every month, whatever it is. And my take on this is that we put together a meeting schedule six months in advance, so that we have six months of meetings, but, you know, we know when we're meeting and we can have that schedule. You would, of course, review that first if you had any sort of, you know, maybe you're away or out of town or you're at a special training or something, you can bring that to our attention and we will make sure that that's not there, that we'll, you know, rearrange a schedule for that. And then, of course, hold meetings like we just did tonight as necessary, but really try to keep. And that helps us plan as well. When I know that somebody wants to be before the selectmen or I know something's coming up, I can assign a date to it and it's just helpful. I mean, not that I couldn't do that before, but if we have the six-month thing going, that helps.
What about services to townspeople? Because when we're not here, these offices aren't open.
So, that's always been very, if I'm, I'm gonna be very honest and it's not meant to be malicious. I think it's very strange that anybody leaves. If Town Hall is open till five thirty, everyone should be here till five thirty. I don't really understand why people are getting out and walking out the door. It's not made sense to me.
We see every-
I plan on being here, I'll be here.
When we go on the summer schedule, Town Hall offices, unless they have meeting schedule, the Town Hall offices follow the selectmen's schedule for the summer, so every other Wednesday. If we go on every other Wednesday, that means they are not going to be here and the townspeople will not have access to them for only every other two weeks.
And that's what the schedule is helpful for as well, because it can cover that. But I understand, I-
But how does that happen if it says on the door, the hours are Wednesday, six thirty to eight? Like, that, that just, and I know it happens, you're absolutely right. But I don't understand why that happened and why it's continuing.
Why would it be just as simple as that Town Hall is open and same schedule that Selectmen meet, we follow the same schedule?
Well, would that-
Six-month thing helps out immensely because it can pan.
The townspeople know that these days will be open.
Correct, exactly.
And if we posted on the door for the summer, I can't see why there would be any confusion.
Well, it would be a posted, be alert right on the bulletin board. But to your point, I agree-
It's a change from the norm.
It is, but I don't think that the taxpayers deserve any less.
Oh, I'm not saying that.
I actually think there's more consistency and they would actually know exactly when we'll be here.
Except for the person that says, I need a blank certificate, fill in whatever it is. I went to Town Hall, they're closed. What happened to Wednesday nights? They were always open, meaning during the regular schedule, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah, we, we just need to advertise it. We need for the public to know.
We would just have a new regular meeting schedule that would be biweekly. Everybody knows, I'm in support of this. Here's my issue, and I don't really have an issue, but to me, this is important. I think we should define, and maybe this is part of the six-month schedule, but my concern is doing biweekly meetings during budget season. I do think we would need to kick it up into high gear, at least during then. So, do you have?
I actually have, I had this conversation with Selectman Pacheco today. I have been part of a budget season where we met every week and I've been part of a budget season where we met every other week. I'm fine, like I said, Wednesday is Dayton. I don't do anything on a Wednesday unless there's some catastrophic thing happening. Wednesdays are for Dayton, so I'm here. I think it's wise maybe to spread things out in the budget. We already get some criticism a little bit, like your meetings are too long. I have a whole idea about how I'm gonna approach the budget next year. But again, I, I'm not, I think it's wise to have every week for the budget. I think it's helpful, there's so many changes that go on. And in the interest of time, we're trying to jam in a lot of stuff in a short amount of time. So, I, I would be totally fine with having a more often meeting schedule during the budget.
So, would you be okay with, for example, and I don't know what the motion's gonna be because I'm chairman and I'm not gonna make it, but something like going to a biweekly, biweekly schedule with the understanding that we need to be flexible during budget season?
So moved. No, I'm just kidding, yes, I believe that's perfectly fine.
Yeah, but why do we have to include that in the motion? Because you, you can call special meeting anyway, so.
Yeah, I think it's just being clear to people. But with or without that, I don't mind.
I'm prepared to make a motion that the Board of Selectmen meet the second and fourth Wednesday of the month, effective September first.
Okay, I'm gonna-
We're already, oh, okay, I get the second and fourth, okay. Alright, I get what you're saying.
I'm gonna second it for discussion purposes.
Sure.
Alright, discussion.
My concern is that at the beginning, when this was brought up, before we went on our summer schedule, we said we were gonna try it for the summer months, July and August, and make the decision in September. Now that we're discussing it tonight, we're almost into August and I think we need to hear from the people out there who are hearing this tonight. I think we need to get the word out that the Board of Selectmen is going to do what it said it was going to do when it voted back in June. And in September, the Board of Selectmen is, at its first meeting, will act on establishing the meeting schedule and that's when we can do the, the permanent changes that we're talking about, whether it's first and third Wednesdays or, and schedule others. That's all I'm saying, because that's what we told them back in June when we voted this thing originally. We're gonna let it run for the summer.
I don't think we actually voted, right? We, we never actually, we couldn't decide.
I don't believe it was a vote, but I think it was a test run. And I believe the budget thing was discussed and talked about. And I just, I mean, I think that it's going well. We've got, I mean, with some certain circumstances in June, we actually didn't meet for a while.
And we had more meetings last summer, Selectman Goulart, you remember? We were busy, we didn't even get a week off.
All I'm saying is, what we told the people back in, well, it must've been May because it started in June. We went on this June, July, August.
I believe Selectman Taylor was here, I think-
Me too. This was April. Yeah, this was March, April.
So, all I'm saying is, let's, let's do exactly what we said we were gonna do, which means run through August, but everyone is, hears this tonight and it will be out there that first meeting in September, we will be acting on a permanent meeting schedule for the Board of Selectmen.
But we can still vote on this motion.
The first meeting in September being the second Wednesday of the month.
Yeah.
September, it's like, you don't understand?
Is that the one, what was the first one?
What is scheduled right now is the first week, the first Wednesday. Because we ran through a list of summertime meeting dates.
Oh, because of the way our dates are, okay.
And it's the, like, right now, we're on the second and fourth Wednesday.
Okay, so, we, for August, other, forget the special, that's a special. We have August eighth and August twenty-second and then September the fifth, which is the Wednesday after Labor Day. That's what, that's the date we'd be looking at.
That would be the first Wednesday. The second would be the twelfth, right?
Correct, so if we went with first and third or second and fourth, whatever.
I like second, second, it doesn't matter. September twelfth, okay with you?
My motion is second and fourth.
Alright.
The thing with, the thing with first and third is that when we get into the busy holidays that come towards the end of the month, we will not be in conflict with those. Because, for example, in November, we do not meet the Wednesday of Thanksgiving week. Because, you know, Thanksgiving's the next day. So, when we look at the schedule, we just need to consider November, December, because those are the holidays that-
Exactly, and that's exactly what I, what I like to do or used to do. I used to do a six, six months at a time. One column was a selectmen's meetings, the other column was important holidays and dates to know. Town meeting was on there, any sort of special date. And if it didn't work or you, you know, the three of you had some sort of conflict or anything, we nip it in the bud six months in advance. Everyone knows, everyone knows when Town Hall's gonna be closed, everyone knows when there's no trash pickup. Everybody knows. So, I, I like the six-month planning head and it works out all the kinks ahead of time. So, I think we're all saying the same thing.
I don't think the taxpayer or the citizen expects to get that kind of services that holiday week. They know that there's interruptions that holiday week, so.
And we'll do it far enough in advance.
Right, exactly.
I'm okay with first and third, second and fourth, second and fourth on the table, totally fine with it. Anybody have any further discussion?
No, I just want the Town Administrator to be able to put together a draft, six-month schedule. So, to see, considering the holidays, whether one and three or two and four are the best way to go, so we only vote at once.
Is this something you could do before our September meeting? So, we could kinda act on it before?
Yeah, because we got a couple of meetings.
Yeah.
Sure, but what are you asking me to do? Put it together with second and fourth Wednesdays?
No, no, you're gonna look at the, a biweekly meeting schedule.
Okay.
And you're gonna look at the holidays. And you're gonna figure out which Wednesdays we can meet.
Yeah, we might have to switch, yeah.
And based on that, you'll come up with a one and three or a two and four.
I am definitely able to do it.
But the motion is for the second and fourth.
And you could, correct me if I'm wrong, when you do that, when you like go to do what the meeting schedule would be six months, you would already be seeing and then you would tell us this week, you can't do second and fourth, you have to do-
And what I end up saying it, like, on paper, but submitting to you is, you know, this holiday's following here, so I've changed the schedule, it's gonna be the second and third Wednesday that month or whatever.
I'm okay with that. I just wanted to, I think we overlooked, because we kinda discussed this last week. I just want the public to be aware, part of the reason that this is so important to the town, I would say, is because we're trying to look for ways where we can make Administrative Assistant Brady's life a little bit easier and sort of synchronize the operation. It takes a lot of work to do a meeting. I, I know you guys are literally, you know, busy up until we come out here and the camera turns on. That is the point of doing this. This isn't, you know, a decision where we just wanna work less. This is important for the actual function of the town. So, I just wanna put it in the proper context before we take a vote on this. Any further discussion?
I just like to say maximize efficiencies.
Absolutely.
That's my-
Absolutely, and I want to commend before we take this vote, because it doesn't matter which way it goes. I wanna commend you for taking the time to discuss possible strategies with Mrs. Brady because I think nobody besides you would know how to improve efficiency because she's, you guys are the ones doing, you know, the brunt work. So, thank you very much. Alright, any further discussion? So, just to remind everybody, what we're voting on now is to set the Board of Selectmen's schedule going forward, starting September twelfth to the second and fourth Wednesday.
September twelfth?
Yep, that would be the first, that would be the first-
The second Wednesday of September.
Oh, I see what you mean.
So, this would be a permanent thing going forward, obviously, unless we decide to change it. So, we take it to a vote. All those in favor say aye, aye, opposed, abstentions?
I abstain.
Motion passes, the ayes have it. Alright, continue a.
The one I'm afraid to touch here.
Are you still gonna do a schedule?
Yeah.
Oh, of course, oh, yes, oh, yes.
She'll have a schedule for us September twelfth.
You're gonna see everything. I'm actually gonna do it early, cuz I don't like to wait. So, I'm gonna do it early so everyone can-
Thank you.
The other thing is that, given the late, some of us call it the late hour, not everybody. Are we gonna go through all these items or is there any in particular that you want us to think about or act on tonight or think about for the next meeting?
Sure, so I, the ones that I would say are-
Can we at least get through the desk thing before we?
I think that's a major one, just because of, I just think it's a major one. But there are others that I'll go through that I think that are, are quick. So, the selectmen's reports, when you have selectmen's reports, I'm just recommending and requesting, actually, that we can put them on the agenda because Selectman Goulart, for instance, is, is all over the place with various different activities. They're important, they're important to the town and people may be specifically following that. And the whole open meeting law is all about giving people the opportunity to come to a meeting that they wanna know about a certain item. So, if we inadvertently say like, oh, I was at this event, somebody, you know, potentially, it's just in the gray area of the open meeting law stuff. We have selectmen reports and you know you wanna say something. If we could just send it over to Karen or myself, we'll add it to the agenda. Of course, there's always public input, that if it didn't make it there, you can, you can put it in there. So, that's a mini one.
Is this something we need to vote on?
No, just agreement that you'll do it.
It's just gonna be a practice going forward. Is this okay? Because sometimes I know you're just like me.
I'm gonna violate it tonight because I went to the county.
Public input, public input, Nancy.
My only concern would be, you know how sometimes, like, we'll have an event earlier that day and then you come and you don't wanna wait a week?
Right, and I don't blame-
Well, wait two weeks, it would be two weeks.
Well, exactly, so that's why that public input is a catch-all there. But as long as we're not acting on anything, we're fine. If it's informational, it's good. But if you know about, the whole premise is, if you know you're gonna speak about this, just to add it in, that's all that.
I think that's fair.
And then, another quick one is, well, you know what, let's just do the desks and then if you wanna work. If we're gonna have to revisit anyway, might as well.
Yep. Do you have any, I, I mean, I know you wrote something here, so.
Oh, I'm sorry, sure.
Yeah, no, no, give your recommendation.
So, here's my recommendation on the three desks and this is really from efficient, it's not meant to be-
Space and efficiency.
Yes, space and efficiency, it correlates to another recommendation I have. It's not meant to kick you out, it's not meant to do that at all. It's, I just think it's very, not a good practice to have the three desks like that for a variety of reasons. One major one is the open meeting law, another is space. Karen and I have already started cleaning out the office a little bit. So, here's my idea to remove the desks. Removing the desks out, this would become potentially your, your desk space and this meeting room. People aren't gonna love this, but this meeting room is no longer kind of this free-for-all meeting room. We would use the other meeting rooms that would be available to us downstairs when next door is finished, which I think everyone will wanna use that one. So, this now becomes your space. If somebody needs to use this, Karen and I will definitely take all of the, you know, the, the sensitive information that may be sent to you or dropped on your desks or anything like that away, so there's no issue there. Or we can have mailboxes put in for you to come and get your mail. With one desk, a shared workstation, I like keeping where Nancy kind of is in the back there, that little desk that faces the wall for a second workstation. But we really do have to get away from people being here at the same time. If there's office hours, I think that's great. Maybe people can come in if you have an established schedule of office hours and the other two selectmen know that that's not available, like, the office isn't available to them during that time. One of the other recommendations is that we hire another person for the Board of Selectmen slash Town Administrator to use together, not my assistant, but for, it's not specifically a Town Administrator, it's for collectively. I have a plan about how one does post-meeting and one does pre-meeting. What I mean by that is the work derived from the meeting, which is substantial, would be one person, minutes and all of that. The other person would be post, pre-meeting, posting agendas, doing the schedule that we just talked about, various things like that. And then, also tying into passports, a backup passport person. So, there's a lot of things going on with this one item.
Is this full-time?
It's up to you, part-time, full-time. I say part, um, full-time because it's coming eventually, right? Like, that always seems to be the case, but that's up to you.
My, I, I have two issues. I have no, you know, I'm honestly, public, I'm never here. I have a full-time job, I work in Norwood, so removing the desks, fine. I'm happy to sit on the floor, have no problem with that. My issue is, when I finally do get here, I don't necessarily wanna sit in this room because I'm gonna be sitting in it for quite a length of time during the meeting. My suggestion, friendly amendment, the most I'd be willing to do is to remove them and then put some sort of a small or medium size, I don't know, round table that we can kinda share, like, similar to what you have in your, so that we have somewhere to put our stuff. Correct, I use a filing cabinet, so I'm not storing stuff. If you took my desk out right now, it wouldn't matter, just the stuff on top of the desk would be important. So, that's my issue. The other thing I have is, before we discuss, you know, getting someone else to help out in the office, I do think we should give the bi-weekly meetings a trial run to see if that really does help. And I know you weren't saying right now, but.
Thank you.
Um, so that, those were my two issues, my colleagues?
Um, I had actually had a conversation with Karen about this, I don't know how long ago. And, and then I read this, and then I took a look at my house at home and said, "What am I gonna do with all this stuff, right now? I could unload a bedroom and bring it back here, and where am I gonna put it? It's because I worked at home for so many, so many years.
Right.
All right, and it was convenient, but I'm not on the Board of Health anymore, so I don't have that whole stuff. But I got stuff that I can't throw away, and yet, the other thing is, with all of the, um, paper that we're getting every week, every week, bi-weekly, whatever. This reminds me of the old days at the school department, because this, we did these kinds of packages. I wish there's some way we could reduce the paperwork that's coming out here. Now, the problem is.
Ideas on that, I, we just.
Electronically, you're still gonna have something paper here at the meeting, because even if you read it at home and write some notes, you gotta have something to say, what did that say about? Or if we get into a discussion, what exactly did it say?
So, I, I am.
Notes on the pound marking thing.
Right, so I'm very sensitive to packets, I actually felt strongly about paperless, um, not here, in my previous position. And they, we ended up moving to iPads and reducing the paper significantly. We're just not there yet, uh, if we wanna explore that, I'm very much on board, but I don't know if we're there yet.
As the, um, non-senior member of the board, I am like.
What does that mean?
What does that mean?
Longest-serving, longest-serving.
She's the longest-serving, um.
Also the oldest.
I, right, I, you said it, not me. I am like attached to paper, I'm sorry, greenies, I know I'm on the green commu, I get it, okay? I love writing, reading things on paper, I'm sorry, I need to mark it up. Nancy has her red pen.
Exactly.
We are, even if you gave, even if the town was like, Board of Selectmen, you each have an iPad, I just like cannot do it.
And I know this about you, and I, I, we're not there yet. My ideas on those, after the meeting's done, so Karen and I, by law, have to keep the meeting packets. That doesn't solve your note issue, right? But if you want, we can easily scan this, and you'll have it digitally, and then you don't have to keep it at home. We started cleaning out, so we lost cable and phones for like an hour on Wednesday afternoon, we were the only ones here, and I was like, let's clean. So, we started cleaning out, and my idea is that you each get one of the larger file cabinets for your stuff, to curb that very thing, bring it in, I'll go through it, you know, every, like an hour a day, I'll go through it and see what needs to. I know that it's a lot, it should be, you've been on the board for a long time, you, you, but those documents should come here.
Stuff that I save is stuff I need, I got stormwater back to the beginning.
To access?
All right?
To access you?
Periodically, I, yes.
So, if you had one of those filing.
So, what I'm saying is, now what I have here, besides my desk, which doesn't have a lot of space, I have that file that's sitting on my desk, that's active, and then when I can put it away.
Right.
It goes away, just like bridge projects, once we get through with them, they get, they're downstairs, whatever. But, that was the other thing I thought about, what am I gonna do with all this junk I got here? Junk meaning, I really can't throw it away, but it's also not the kinda stuff I would leave out in public.
Exactly, so we can work on that.
Standing out, just a thought.
And it's a good one, and it's real.
Literally had been putting stuff, you know, in my desk, and like I couldn't find anything, and Karen was not, excuse me, Mrs. Brady, Administrative Assistant Brady, was nice enough to, um, like, not give me, but put in the office like a empty filing cabinet, it's a small one with a top and a lower, saved my life, saved my life. Honestly, I am so org, I'm hyper-organized.
I could tell, I just don't.
It is labeled, color-coded, lit, it was the best thing that ever happened to me. So, I love the filing cabinet, it's a way better method than just putting stuff in or on a desk. So, I'm okay with removing the three desks to tie it all back together, but I, I still want some sort of a tables, there needs to be.
A station, I call it a workstation, but you still get this, like a computer.
'Cause they have meetings in here during the day sometimes, and we're not, I'm not gonna kick somebody out so I can make notes on a, do you know what I mean?
I, I, I do, completely, so.
People also eat lunch in this room.
Yes, Mrs. Cadbury.
You know, and, 'cause we don't really have a place to go, to, to do that.
Fix that, we need to provide a lunchroom.
We've been work, we've been working on logistics in this building, so we have taken all that into consideration.
And I'm not saying we do that, you know, tomorrow, they're gone, not at all.
The other thing I would say about the configuration of the desks, giving the appearance of three selectmen sitting there cabbying, quite frankly, uh, since the last election, we rarely see one another, we're like ships in the night.
That is true.
That's how it's supposed to be, that's good.
Those desks are vacant, and you know, if you walk in, or somebody comes in when I'm here, one of, one of my colleagues, it's, "Hey, how you doing and whatever?" Um, and we're all going, whatever, I still work from home, so I'm not, when my computer's down, that's when I'm in here doing this. But, um, I don't see Mr. Pacheco, and I rarely see Brett except at night, um, so.
Like a raccoon.
It's not, none of us are here all the time.
Not a rabid one.
Not a rabid.
I said, not a rabid, so I, I agree, but then I think that the idea of a shared workstation might work out, as long as we have the filing space. But this is meant for a discussion, to find out what your concerns are, your concerns, and then we'll address it and come back, but that.
Can a junior member of the selectmen speak?
Of course.
I've been a selectman less than a month, and you're gonna take my desk away from me?
Sorry. This was written before, though.
My.
If I could continue.
Yeah, absolutely, so, excuse me.
I am in favor of, uh, keeping the desk, I, you know, I've spoke to you about this. Uh, I like to have a workstation, I like to be able to come in, this is my stuff.
And it's my turf.
It's my tu, it's my turf.
Agree with you.
I, I'm with you as far as the home, I have a pile of stuff from the zoning Board of Appeals that I can now get rid of. You're not in that situation, you're still an active.
I shred, I shred as much stuff as I can, I don't throw anything in the trash unless it's shredded. But, but I do have stuff that I have to refer back to.
I don't, I don't doubt it, which is why the filing cabinets come.
Filing cabinets better, rather than a mess on a desk.
I mean, we have to keep records of those, we are bound, we need, so they should be here.
Mm-hmm.
So, we gotta find a spot, I mean, we talked about storage, 'cause that's.
I just wanna clarify.
I'm okay with the office hours, if that's how we wanna work it, so that we don't, uh, but Ms. Goulart, uh, Mrs. Goulart is correct. We've been in, in here rarely, but occasionally, and there's no conversation going on, I'm folk, you know, I'm a new select, uh, selectman, so I'm coming here more often than I'm sure in the future I'm gonna have to come here.
Mm-hmm.
I've acknowledged that this is not a 24/7 job, that I, I don't need to be here every day, but I do come in a little bit more often now, because I'm, I'm learning the ropes. I, I came in this morning, I came in early this afternoon, you know, for the meeting, uh, tonight, and I'm probably gonna continue doing that for, for a while.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but if, if you wanna have, you know, we can come to some agreement as to what hours are gonna be, when we're gonna be here, uh, I'm okay with that. I, I do understand the situation in your office, that it really ties up a lot of space. Maybe maybe talking about help for you, and where's that person gonna go, so it is something. I'm not opposed to having a desk in here, I know that, you know, you're not necessarily in favor of it.
No, no, I just want, I wanna, I want my workspace.
I want my work, I'm not sure how we can do it here, given, you know, the, the three board members, and we have other people sitting up here, I'm not sure how we can do it, but I, uh, I would like to have the input from, uh.
Um, if we're discussing logistics throughout the building, maybe we could make a private space for the selectmen, not private, but a public-private space outside of that office, that the selectmen can go to. Seeing as how they're using it one at a time, and the public will know they have hours, they can go see the selectmen during that time, and they'll have their own, their own space.
So, here, if. So, there's, I have so much running through my head, if there's set hours, we can make sure that nobody's in here for those hours. If there's set hours, we can eliminate at least two of the desks, I think. I understand that you don't really love the idea of sharing, but we can organize in a way where you all have your own drawer, or your own section, and your own filing cabinet. We have enough to have three, we have three filing cabinets, one can be Nancy, one can be Brett, one can be, um, Ken. Sorry, I should've done selectmen, sorry about that. So, we have all that, we can organize it, um, I think, I, I feel very strongly about this, I've hemmed and hawed about this multiple times. I don't wanna give the accept, the, the, I'm not trying to kick you out of here, I really am not, I welcome it, I just, we do need to address this.
You can't even walk.
It's too tight.
Behind my desk, I mean, my issue is not even the appearance, because I know, I'm not talking to them about anything, and they know that too.
And we're not here.
And we're, we're not here, quite frankly, but, um, my issue is space, we need space. We have two chairs in front of, uh, Selectman Pacheco's desk, that usually have stuff on them. We literally do not have, so you can't even sit there, 'cause the chair has now become essentially like a table. Um, we need space, so that's the issue, it's not so much, we know we're not in there. Um, the other thing is, if we're not in there, what is the problem with one desk? Like, if we, you're not hanging out here, you're not hanging out here, you might be now, but you're gonna, you're gonna, you know, you'll be here less, and I'm never here, so, I, you know.
Like, I like keeping that, I don't know what else to call it, but the workstation behind Nancy, you know what I mean by that?
Yeah, yeah.
That, and then you can each have like a shelf and a filing cabinet, and then one desk, one phone, and, and the shared computer, a shared computer.
I like the idea that Mr. Aggy I mentioned, find another spot for the selectmen. We will have our desks, we will have our spot, and quite frankly, if you want to, you can separate them with carrels.
But.
Businesses do that. By the same token, I think it's important that when the public comes into this building, no selectmen work area, desk, table, whatever you want, whatever it is, gives the impression, where are our elected officials? If they see one of us, they know, you know, and listen to this, they know we come and go. You said it's not a 24/7, correction, Ken, it is a 24/7 job, we have to respond. We have to respond 24/7, but we don't work 24/7.
I made, the referee should've been there, I don't need to be here 24/7.
Coming into this, I mean, I've, I've been in the office, when I say alone, Karen was there, or before Carrie was there, and way back when Annette was there. But somebody would come into the office and say, "I wanna see a selectman." Well, so-and-so's down the hall, okay. Or, "What do you mean, there's no selectmen here, I've come in to see a selectman." And it's, it's, there is a perception of the public, where are our elected officials? Okay, they're the selectmen, where are they? We have other staff, we have other people, the town is running. But, I, I quite frankly like what you're describing, because if there is space that can be allocated, uh, to free up that room, so that it's more office space, it's support staff, so forth and so on, for the Board of Selectmen, for the TA, for whatever else it's gonna be used for. That would address the concerns that Mr. Pacheco and I have about our own workspace, station, whatever. Okay, and, as I said, you can, if you look at office setups, they don't have walls anymore, they have carrels, okay? Private offices are not for, especially where we're in and out, okay? And we're not looking for private offices, but we would like to have a desk that we can call our own. At least, I think that's where Mr. Pacheco and I are coming from.
My only issue with that suggestion of creating a new space is, I think the perception for a lot of people will be, we had people go over to Old Town Hall, and, "Oh, maybe it was just so they could have more space," which is totally not true. We're here less than we've ever been, I know you are, I know I am, and you're new, Selectman Pacheco. So, that would be my concern with that idea, is, why would we need an extra space if we're here less than we ever are?
Also, all your stuff is here, and your meeting is here, like, and Karen's here, and I'm here, like, I, I don't want you to go anywhere. I need you.
So, I'm, you know, I would wanna stay in that office over there, but like, you know, after this whole conversation going on here, I'm not totally opposed to having one area, whether it's a round table, or, or whatever, that we have a stapler and pens and all that kinda stuff, but our stuff, individually.
Yeah, your laptop, your.
We have a file cabinet, so I can go grab my stuff, and I can sit down at that table, or desk, or whatever. Uh, I guess I'm not opposed to that, so we would be removing two desks.
Mm-hmm, mine, please take mine.
You, you're gonna, you, you're gonna keep mine.
I wanna repurpose it, is there something wrong?
No, there's not.
If we're gonna keep a desk, or if we're gonna keep a table, I, I'm not opposed to a desk, but then we could draw us that, we won't be.
Right, I mean, I don't, I'm not gonna, I don't wanna mess the things up, you know.
I wanna be able to go to Karen and say, "Karen, I have a question about this," and I wanna be able to see you across the hall and say.
Yeah.
And Karen can access the documents easier without tripping over, you know, I mean, it's time in there.
We cleaned out, we made decent, I mean, in, in one hour, less than, like, but an hour, we cleaned out a decent amount. I found very random things.
Here's why I like this idea too, 'cause I feel like it's two birds, one stone. If, when we go to reconfigure here, when Old Town Hall is done, everything's done, and now we're focused on Town Hall. My, I guess my concern, or I guess my bright side would be, if a new department or something need, says they need a space, and we say, "Okay, you can have a space." Well, now we have two desks, we don't have to go out and buy new furniture, and now they have better furniture than I have, which makes me jealous. Correct.
It's, it's, um, you know, and that's the plan, 'cause Parks and Rec came in here, as you know.
I'm not saying, I agree with that.
If, if that happens, they are looking for a desk, a computer, a phone, a full-on workstation, which is quite a, it's an expense, it is.
It's an expense, if we're gonna do something like that, and we've had a conversation about this, it should be other people, historical commission, or somebody else, the cemetery commission, being able to use that space, and not just dedicate it just to one, 'cause we'll have desks all over the place, and it should not be in that office there, if we're taking desk out, that new, that desk where your desk can go somewhere, and, but not in that office over there.
As far as I'm concerned, this has very sensitive informa, this is no offense, us, um, you know, and whoever fills these chairs in the future. This is.
So, where do we go from here on this, uh, do we?
I feel like, I think, I don't know, if you wanna vote on it, if you want us to kind of figure out, I mean, I'm gonna clean regardless, so.
Is everybody okay with that? And I'm not, I don't know which way it's gonna go.
I'm not ready to vote on it tonight, I think, I think we need to work through this a little bit more, uh, we, are we going to hire more help?
And that's later on in the thing, so you're right.
There's, see, this isn't just one issue, there's other things involved.
Tied into it.
Um, and we got other potential boards or committees that would be affected by what happens, what we do.
But I'm okay with voting on it, 'cause all we'd be doing is making more space, it doesn't, I'm not saying we're gonna fill it. I think we should, we need to do a trial run for a period of time with the bi-weekly meetings, and see if it really helps. I mean, I know Ms. Administrative Assistant Brady will be.
If we're gonna do the, well, we voted to do the, the bi-weekly, continue the bi-weekly schedule. Um, why don't we do these step at a time? See how that goes, revisit the desk situation, get more information on whether or not we need more support staff. Uh, figure out, um, we did ask for information from Parks and Rec on what their thoughts and plans were, uh, because this is all part of a plan.
I believe are planning to come to the special town meeting with that request, I think that's what.
Oh, in the fall?
In the fall, I'm sorry, and now I need to specify, October meeting, um, I believe.
Well, I, I agree with a little bit of what Ms. Goulart's saying, that I'm not necessarily ready to vote on this, because, quite frankly, we haven't discussed what hours we're gonna be here, so I think, uh, Ms. Goulart, myself, and you, have to think about what days we think are day, we think we're gonna be available to come here, so, but perhaps, I don't think we should wait until we go to bi-weekly stuff, we're already kinda doing that anyway. I think we oughta maybe next, at next week's meeting, maybe put this on the agenda, so that we can, uh, take action on this.
Two weeks.
Actually, we're meeting next week.
We can do it next week, this'll be quick.
Right, we're meeting next week, for the warrant, so.
We're meeting August 1st.
So, if we can, rather than have a bunch of stuff on the, the following, if we can put a few stuff on, on the next.
Spread the love, right?
Spread the love.
And do you mean just the selectmen's desk discussion, or the rest of this?
We can continue this entire.
We can continue, but I, that's one that we can take some action on, to kinda live, alleviate some of the problems that are going on there.
Since we're gonna discuss, and I'm asking your opinion now, since we're gonna continue this discussion next week, um, do we wanna move on? Okay, you're okay with that, my colleagues, so are you okay with that?
Move on to agenda items?
Yeah.
Okay, yes, yeah, not necessarily the list, yeah, yes, okay, yes.
And I just wanna say thank you for, you know, reading them for what they are, and, and having the conversation.
I wanna thank you for being honest, you know, I knew, um, you kinda gave me it with some caveats, you don't need to do that. You're here to give us your honest recommendation, whether we like it or not, so.
Thank you.
Yes, absolutely. All right.
Still alive, so that's good, right?
The fuel-efficient vehicle policy, um, I will give just a brief info, so, since, uh, we're working to become a green community, uh, there are five criteria to become a green community. We've already satisfied three, this is the fourth of five. Um, this policy essentially pledges that we would reduce fuel consumption and energy use by only purchasing fuel-efficient vehicles to meet this goal. So, this is essentially a replacement policy, we have vehicles right now that are not fuel-efficient. What we would be to, be committing to, if this were to pass, um, would be, when those vehicles' half-life is now expired, we would replace them with something more fuel-efficient. Um, and that's basically what this is, um.
There are exemptions.
There are exemptions, uh, would you like, should I read them?
Um, well, I was just gonna, uh, so I changed it slightly from.
I noticed.
Okay, so I got this from another community that has their designation.
Okay, cool.
And what I liked about it is they were very specific in the miles per gallon, um, the efficiency standards, and I thought that can only help us, because when I'm scrambling around, I just wanna look at the policy and know what I have to do, I don't wanna have to reference something else. I don't know if that's lazy, or I'm just super busy and I don't have time for that. So, I incre, I added kind of all of that information, so that we'd have it, um, really at our fingertips.
I will also state, um, just to piggyback off what our Town Administrator has said, there are some very specific exemptions. Um, these exemptions, and I will detail what they are, they basically exempt the school department, police department, and fire department, um, from having to comply, and, and, highway, excuse, he's looking at me like, don't, we can't get a fuel-efficient 16-wheeler.[1766.64]
Backhoe.
Exactly. Good point. Thank you, Madam Administrator. So the exemptions are as follows. Heavy-duty vehicles, and I believe the cutoff is anything eight thousand five hundred pounds or more is exempt. They include fire trucks, ambulances, some public work trucks that meet this policy's definition of a heavy-duty vehicle, police cruisers, passenger vans, and cargo vans. Fuel-efficient models are not currently available for vehicles like that. However, we would commit to purchasing fuel-efficient policy, police cruisers, yeah, that's a typo, passenger vans, and cargo vans when they become commercially available, which it doesn't seem like that's going to be anytime soon. Police and fire department administrative vehicles are not exempt and must meet fuel-efficient requirements. Madam Administrator?
One item about that is I would argue that our chief's vehicles are not necessarily administrative, because at least the fire chief responds in that vehicle to emergency situations. But that is one question that came up. I don't know what a Tahoe weighs, but I believe...
Mr. Commissioner, can you share the fuel efficiency ratings we need to be? Because I am a car guy, so...
Yes.
Tell you if that's attainable.
And this is still a draft, so that's good. So two-wheel-drive car, twenty-nine miles per gallon. This is from 2010. Two-wheel-drive car, twenty-nine miles per gallon, four-wheel-drive car, twenty-four miles per gallon, two-wheel-drive minivan, twenty, four-wheel-drive minivan, eighteen, two-wheel-drive pickup truck, seventeen, four-wheel-drive pickup truck, sixteen, two-wheel-drive SUV, twenty-one, and a four-wheel-drive SUV, eighteen. And by today's standards, I feel these are pretty low.
I concur. Those are all attainable. You can buy those vehicles without, yes.
And it's not...
And Chief's Tahoe probably is fairly close to that rating.
Oh, really? Yes, it's the one that was purchased and the common one?
Yes, yes. The new Tahoe's, yeah, the new Tahoe's in excess of twenty miles per gallon.
Are these MPG's highway or average, every day?
Combined.
Okay.
Combined.
And this has the formula for how you would take care of that. But I drive a CRV, four-wheel-drive SUV, and I get thirty miles per gallon.
Oh, my God, your car is better than my home sitter.
I'm on the econ. I'm on the econ button, and, you know, I don't have a problem. I love it.
So just to, I don't know if I said this, but the purpose of this policy would be to make efficient use of municipal vehicles, to minimize the cost of town operations to taxpayers, to enforce environmentally responsible fleet maintenance, minimize the town's consumption of natural resources, in line with our right to farm by law, to protect and preserve the natural environment, and to comply, of course, with the Department of Energy Resources Green Communities Program requirements. I will also mention that in addition to having three requirements already towards becoming a green community, the town did vote to pass the Stretch Energy Code, so my understanding would be the town wants to become a green community, and this is part of that.
Would this prohibit us from recycling vehicles like we do now?
If it's not meeting the required...
Yep.
So couldn't normal have any, you know, for the police department?
Well, but eventually, well, the police is exempt, but...
Yeah, but once they recycle a vehicle and it becomes another town department's vehicle, you would need to comply, so we wouldn't be able to do that anymore.
Yep. My thought would be we should comply.
But we're, we're able to purchase a used vehicle as long as it complies with the, which I think, which I think they're pretty long, but...
Yes. I think those values are easily attainable, whether it be a new or used vehicle. So the answer, Selectman Goulart, is no, we wouldn't be able to take hand-me-downs anymore. We would actually have to go out and purchase a vehicle that would meet these ratings.
Which I'll comply.
My vehicle would be one of them, because it is on its last night, so...
Another item is, I believe military surplus is out, as far as this is concerned, but we haven't had great experience with that in the last handful of years.
Does it exclude all diesels?
No.
It depends on the weight, because anything, again, under eight thousand five hundred pounds has to comply.
Yep.
But the new diesels that are in that lower, like, class limit are exceeding almost thirty miles per gallon right now, so...
Oh, my God.
Two-by-two.
Yeah. Anything, obviously, I drafted this and then you edited it, so I don't have any questions. Anything else, my colleague?
This is something we're gonna vote on tonight, with this draft that we digest.
Well, so my suggestion would be we need to move on it only because of time. A, we just moved to biweekly meetings, so if we try to read this thing three times and then vote on it, we'll be into December. We need to get this approved before we even go to the school committee, which it sounds like we're on their agenda. This is on their agenda.
August 14th.
Yeah, August 14th, so...
We have the first and the eighth to devote to this, if you'd like.
So tonight's the first reading. That would give us the other two, because we have that, we have a policy about policies.
Yes, oh, read it tonight, read it, and then the third would be that week.
Read it and vote on it.
So we're meeting every week. All right. Should I start?
I'll read it if you'd like.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm in a talkative mood today. Okay. Fuel-efficient vehicle policy. Background, the town of Dayton is seeking a green community designation, and through this policy pledges to reduce fuel consumption and energy use by only purchasing fuel-efficient vehicles to meet this goal. Purpose and applicability: To establish a requirement that the town of Dayton purchase only fuel-efficient vehicles for municipal use whenever such vehicles are commercially available and practicable. Further, this policy is adopted in order to make efficient use of municipal vehicles, minimize the cost of town operations to taxpayers, enforce environmentally responsible fleet maintenance, minimize the town's consumption of natural resources to protect and preserve the natural environment, and to comply with the D O E R Green Communities Program requirements. This policy shall apply to all departments of the town of Dayton. Definitions: Combined city and highway MPG, EPA Combined Fuel Economy. This is, this means, the fuel economy from driving a combination of forty-three percent city miles and fifty-seven percent highway miles, and is calculated as follows, and there's just a numerical formula that shows, combined fuel economy equals one over point four-three divided by city miles per gallon plus point five-seven divided by highway miles per gallon. Drive system: The manner in which mechanical power is directly transmitted from a vehicle's drive shaft to the wheels. The following codes are used to indicate drive systems. AWD, all-wheel drive; four-wheel drive, automatically controlled by the vehicle's powertrain system. 4WD, four-wheel drive; drive-selectable, four-wheel drive with two-wheel drive option. 2WD, two-wheel drive, two-wheel drive only. Heavy-duty vehicle: A vehicle with a manufacturer's gross vehicle weight rating of more than eight thousand five hundred pounds. Guidelines: All departments shall purchase only fuel-efficient vehicles for municipal use whenever such vehicles are commercially available and practicable. The town of Dayton will maintain an annual vehicle inventory for all municipal vehicles and maintain a plan for replacing non-exempt vehicles with vehicles that meet, at a minimum, the fuel-efficient ratings contained in the most recent Criterion Four guidance published by the Massachusetts Department of Energy Resources Green Communities Division. The fuel efficiency ratings contained therein are based on the most recently published U.S. Environmental Protection Agency data on combined city and highway MPG for vehicles. Based on 2010 data, vehicles must have a combined fuel economy no less than the following: Two-wheel-drive car, twenty-nine miles per gallon; four-wheel-drive car, twenty-four miles per gallon; two-wheel-drive minivan, twenty miles per gallon; four-wheel-drive minivan, eighteen miles per gallon; two-wheel-drive pickup truck, seventeen miles per gallon; four-wheel-drive pickup truck, sixteen miles per gallon; two-wheel-drive SUV, twenty-one miles per gallon; four-wheel-drive SUV, eighteen miles per gallon. Note: Hybrid or electric vehicles in these classes will meet these criteria. Green Communities Criterion Four Guidance, Criteria Four Guidance must be checked for updates prior to purchasing new vehicles. Exemptions: The following vehicles for municipal use are exempt from this policy. Heavy-duty vehicles. Examples include fire trucks, ambulances, and some public work trucks that meet this policy's definition of heavy-duty vehicle. Police cruisers, passenger vans, and cargo vans. Fuel-efficient models are not currently available for these vehicles. However, we commit to purchasing fuel-efficient policy cruiser, police, there it is. Fuel-efficient police cruisers, passenger vans, and cargo vans when they become commercially available. Police and fire department administrative vehicles are not exempt, that's not exempt, and must meet fuel-efficient requirements. To purchase a new or replacement vehicle for municipal use under one of these exemptions, the department slash division staff responsible for fleet management and/or fleet procurement must request an exemption approval by the Board of Selectmen. Inventory: The following information shall be included in a vehicle inventory list, and said list shall be updated on an annual basis and provided to the state's Green Communities Division. Model, make, model year, month slash year purchased, drive system, meaning two-wheel-drive, four-wheel-drive, or all-wheel-drive; is it a heavy-duty vehicle, exempt or non-exempt; miles-per-gallon rating, vehicle function. Note: Departments may use EPA combined miles-per-gallon estimates or actual combined miles-per-gallon. Fuel-efficient vehicle replacement plan: All non-exempt vehicles shall be replaced with fuel-efficient vehicles that adhere to the most recent Green Communities Criterion Four guidance. Vehicles shall be replaced when they are no longer operable and will not be recycled from one municipal department slash division to another unless the recycled replacement vehicle meets the fuel efficiency ratings outlined in this policy. In addition, when replacing exempt vehicles, the function of the vehicle will be reviewed for potential replacement with a more fuel-efficient vehicle, including a fuel-efficient non-exempt vehicle. The town of Dayton will review the vehicle inventory list on an annual basis, along with the Green Communities Criterion Four guidance, to plan for new acquisitions as part of planning for the new fiscal year budget. Question slash enforcement: To ensure that all vehicle purchases and replacements are consistent with this policy, the Board of Selectmen or its designees shall approve all vehicle purchases to replace any exempt and non-exempt vehicle for municipal use upon consultation with the department's staff responsible for fleet management and/or fleet procurement. This policy is enforced by the chief administrative officer and/or his/her designee or designees.
So public, we will be reading this next week for our second reading, and then August 8th for our third reading, and at that meeting, we will vote on this one way or the other. And thank you for editing it as well.
Absolutely.
I appreciate that. All right. Appointments. Agenda Item 8C. First, we did have Jennifer Louise rescind her appointment to the IT Committee, so we're gonna discuss appointing David Marvel, also on Cable Television Committee, to the IT Committee. I guess I'll start this. I think it's a fantastic idea. Dave is our tech guru down in Cable, and I think he would be a fant, a natural fit on this committee.
Thank you, Dave, for volunteering.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we appoint David Marvel to the IT Committee.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Congratulations and thank you again, Mr. Marvel.
Thanks, David.
Just a point on that. Once the scope of services and all the procurement is complete on the network administrator thing, or administration, I was planning on asking the IT Committee to meet and review it with me and make a recommendation for you.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Glad to have you.
Can I make, this is off-topic, so I'm just gonna make this comment and we can move on. I was, been thinking a lot about network administration, and I hope when you go to look into hiring a company, please ask if there would be someone there that could be dedicated, because it gets tough if, you know, the town clerk calls and she gets Joe, and then town treasurer calls and she gets Sam, and they're saying two different things. So just a little bit of continuity. I think that's what we need.
Absolutely. And one of my preferences is that they're available to be on-site without many hoops to jump through.
Perfect. We just don't want to be in a situation where we are with our current vendor.
Lately, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
That's in the works. I'm very...
So under 8C, number two, rescind appointment of Samantha Turgeon from the Agricultural Commission. And just so the public knows, Ms. Turgeon had, we had had a discussion, and so she decided to rescind her appointment.
Did she resign?
She, yeah. She sent me it.
It says rescind on here, because I don't believe she was ever sworn in, so she's not in there.
Oh, okay.
But she did, she stated her intention to not serve on the committee.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I move that we rescind the appointment of Samantha Turgeon to the Agricultural Commission.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion passes. Okay. Number 8C, number three. The reason why that's on the agenda tonight is my interpretation of the Warren article that created, that passed, and then we established the Agricultural Commission. It says that the Board of Selectmen shall appoint somebody from this board to serve on the Agricultural Commission in a non-voting capacity. Did you have the same, Madam Administrator, impression? It sounds to me like we have to.
The word "shall" means you have to.
Correct. Yeah, so we do have to do that. So we don't necessarily have to fill Ms. Turgeon's spot as a non-voting member, but we do have to appoint someone from the board. Now, I'm not gonna volunteer anybody...
I already have a candidate.
But there's only one person, although you, you come from a farming background. We've had that discussion. I do not. I've lived on a farm. I know you have farm animals. I'm looking at you, so...
What great candidates we have.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that this board appoint Brett Zagrafis to this commission because, because when we were going for our CCC certification, each member of the board, this is just superfluous, Karen, the motion is to appoint him, but I want to explain to people that the Agricultural Commission was Brett's baby. Mine was Stormwater. The other one was Open Space. And he was commended by the Lieutenant Governor, because it was the only town in the Commonwealth out of three hundred at that point that had made the suggestion as an Agricultural Commission as a best practice. And since you're a non-voting member, I don't think you're gonna be tied up all the time. But anyhow, I'm just in recognition of what you did as far as getting the certification approved.
We were true to our word.
So the motion is to appoint Mr. Zagrafis to be the non-voting member.
I will second, I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none?
Do you have any farm animals?
Uh, do you consider a cat a farm animal?
Absolutely not.
I do not.
We're gonna get pigs.
We're gonna share them.
No more than three, right?
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Let's take it to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. Motion passes.
I would just like to request that we do Item 8H, review cemetery commission fees, because Mr. Ferry is...
It's getting late. Absolutely.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we take Agenda Item 8H out of order.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. Motion passes. Superintendent Ferry, thank you for the invitation and not throwing anything at me. So we are gonna review cemetery commission fees.
I'm not, I'm not the chairman.
The committee has met and made some recommendations. We review the prices from time to time. There's a few things on the Friday that's a little confusing for the town clerk right now, so we wanted to bring it up to date, adjust the prices a little bit, make it a little bit more clearer. There is a couple of questions. Number 1, how does we proceed? Do you guys need to read it three times?
No. No. This is just a changing of a price. This isn't necessarily like a policy.
Our fees just have to be voted on. That's all this is.
The other question was, we don't have a live volume of determines. When the needs arise, we make some phone calls down. We don't keep a contract on a excavator. Do you want to continue doing that? They brought the discussion and possibly have an highway department. So, that would be... I would say that would be your decision.
Do you have a recommendation? Or does the commission?
The commission wants to entertain it. Yes. If I came up with a price, I'm gonna refrain from my opinion on it.
I understand.
Presently, we are doing the veterans during working hours. They would pay a fee if it's a Saturday or a holiday or after hours. You know, after hours, they would have to accommodate a fee. But during working hours, we can accommodate those needs for the veterans only. If we open it up to the other cemeteries, the figure we have with the equipment rental and manpower, it'll be $9.75.
Okay.
I should point out that I'm a member of the Cemetery Commission also, and I'm total in favor of what's being proposed here, that the Highway Department be the ones to excavate for the different graves, and I'm in total agreement with the prices. We had a lengthy discussion about this. So, the prices have changed a little bit.
Yep.
So, I'm not sure if we... We probably should discuss that.
Madam Administrator, did you have any thoughts? Any opinions, recommendations?
Regarding the DVW?
Yep.
I kind of go back and forth, but I think the part of what makes Dayton so charming is that everyone just sort of pitches in and gets what's done, and I really love that about this community. As long as the cost is not incurred by the town and it's not done on town time, it's done separately, not an overtime situation, and I know that they'll handle it.
Of course.
How I have a standard of, then I'm okay with it.
All right. Selectman Goulart?
I just had a question. Are the rates that are being proposed here, are these similar to what people would pay in a private cemetery?
Yes. It's a little different. I'm a bit spot on with others. I do need to... I'm not sure what you're holding there. I did pick up an area while I was sitting here. There it does not show on a veteran cemetery and non-veteran spouse cremation, and that would be $3.50 also.
Non-veteran spouse cremation, $3.50?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Ferry.
We would add, also add language, the price is subject to change, and we'd like to have an effective date of September 1st. There seems to be a small communication problem in the veteran cemetery. So, if we have this effective cemetery September 1st, if these are not created by that time moving forward, we have an instrument to work with.
Why are these the only two cemeteries listed?
The top portion would be Townwide, most actively is the Riverside Cemetery. We did this year do a burial on West Lincoln Cemetery, the 42 on our map, the Townhome Park. Either 53 or 54 cemeteries we have, Riverside one is the most active one right now, and obviously the veteran cemetery is a veteran situation.
Okay, so...
So, the top portion would be Townwide. They would have to have a reason, you know, either a family connection or a family, probably a reason to go non-Riverside area. At this time, we're using Riverside.
I'm just... I'm not thinking of the small, private or... I'm not thinking of the small cemeteries in town. So, I'm thinking about West Dayton, Riverside, veterans is covered separately.
So, that top portion would cover Townwide and our cemetery.
Anything except the veteran cemetery.
Correct.
And Unitarian Cemetery, which is a private cemetery.
Yes. The big community, church.
Why don't we use the cemetery on Elm Street?
We can entertain that.
I know a portion of it is meant for if somebody passes away or a body is in town, found, and there is no family.
Right. And I other thought presently that was handed off to us as I'm a fairly new member. I don't know how many years I've been here on the committee, I think only 20. What was handed on to me was that if we ever needed a mass grave, that's where we could use if we had that situation.
Terrific thought. Thank you for planning ahead.
I don't think any other... I don't think any other...
But along with that, recent, last calendar year, the cemetery commission with a local vendor used that ground penetrating zone out, and we... The newest cemetery that we adopted on Center Street, Briggs Street Cemetery, we did that, and we found that there's quite a bit of room at the end there also. So, if we were to entertain that one way part of Elm Street, I'm sure we would want to do that first because it could be...
So, Briggs and Center Street is like... That's a town cemetery?
Yes. We took that on, I think, five years ago.
Oh, I didn't realize that. Okay.
So, the cemetery on Elm Street you're talking about is the one where the town first meeting?
Yes, the steep hill.
I just happened coincidentally walked that cemetery last week because there's somebody going to the Winslow Davis Museum, whose family built the house, and he thought maybe some of his family was there, so I was looking for a grave. So, those graves are in different areas, so we definitely would have to check to see what's vacant. So, there's old graves here, then there's a big space.
Are they unmarked?
There is some unmarked. There is some what appears to be local residents, you know, before pre-coral time.
Nathaniel Fisher, the first minister, first Reverend of the town, is very...
But if somebody wanted to buy one of these, these would be the rates. I know a single grave lot would be $1,000.
Correct.
Is that right? Okay. I understand.
Any additional questions, colleagues? Madam Administrator?
I'm good.
Mr. Commission?
No.
Selectman Goulart? All right. I'm entertaining a motion. Yeah, Mr. Ferry?
I don't know if it's on that. This, all the sales, all the monies for the sales.
Yes, it is on.
Yep.
100%. That's another thing that's gonna be different. 100% will go towards perpetual care to help build that up.
It is important to note. Thank you, Superintendent Ferry.
Is there anything special that covers that? Because it's a receipt of the town. Is there special legislation that allows that?
A special legislation kind of expanded. I'm not sure about your question you just asked.
I think you mean a revolving account. Yes.
No, what I'm saying is, DOR regs, they just sent a blurb out about this. Unless it's specially designated, all revenue coming into the town goes into the general fund, estimated receipts, ends up in the pot. So, we know that there can be receipts that are designated for special purposes. So, my only question is, do we know for sure that the proceeds from the sale of lots specifically can go to the perpetual care account? That's all I'm saying.
That's a very good question. It's probably Mary. I believe it would be Jen.
Or Sue. It would have been designated at town meeting, I'm assuming, if it's...
Well, I don't know, but the accounting end would be Jen. And the thing I read, the blurb that came out was like a refresher that came out, and it was talking about receipts, town receipts. And everything, unless specifically designated, goes into the estimated receipts, which ends up general fund and free cash, that whole thing. And when I was just reading that, that was my thought, perpetual care. Because normally perpetual care is paid for by the family of the... Who owns the grave or the lots, and you give money to the... Whether it's the town or you give it to the cemetery commission, but in the town reports, they used to list all of those, and they may still do it, all of the perpetual care lots, all right? So, I'm just wondering if the general sale of a grave can be used for that? Because normally, if I bought a grave and there was an interment, it would be understood I'm putting money into this also for perpetual care. So, the question is, if you sell lots, wait a minute. What about all those people that put money into those special perpetual care accounts? So, we just gotta work out the kinks or find out if they're already...
Right. The last time we did the price adjustment, I believe it was a 60-40 split. 60% went to perpetual, 40 went to a receipt reserve account that Jen set up.
Okay.
That I... I really want that I am dealt before official vote.
Exactly.
Unless you can vote pending.
Contingent upon.
And if you say, now you're saying 100% of the proceeds would go to perpetual care. So, there's a question there. The other thing, do we have provisions if a family... If you have an identified person that needs... That has passed, and the family can't afford it, does the town have a policy to provide the service? I mean, if you can't pay, you can't pay. You know what I mean?
As far as the policy, I would assume it's the same as you consider the inland spilling.
Correct.
This board is the only one that can wash it.
Yep.
We would base it on recommendation after all means of claiming the money it's been. Obviously, a deed needs to be done that will be dealt with, and then...
The town?
Because like the veteran cemetery, that was set up in the beginning. If you are a veteran, you're entitled, and you wish to be buried in that cemetery, there is no cost, you know, for the lot and all that. So, my only thought is, if you're not a veteran and you... You're from a needy family, you know? No insurance, no anything. But you want to be buried in Dayton. Is there a provision? That's all my thought was.
It sounds to me like what would have to happen is similar with when Chief McGee sent us like a recommendation. I guess the cemetery commission...
That same policy.
Correct. Would send us a recommendation.
But we would have to exhaust all the other means first.
And we would on a case-by-case basis.
So, you do have a policy.
But you have...
It would be coming to you. And also, like if there's somebody who's not claimed, like there's no family and you don't know...
Well, that's... We already know about that. But I... No, I'm just thinking of a needy family. I don't know if we have a policy. Maybe we need to have a policy.
That's something we can work on. We are the policy board.
Add it to the list.
Right.
Yeah. I have a little post-it. It's faded in the sunlight.
Okay. Just a thought.
Any further discussion? All right. I'm entertaining motions. I do understand this motion would have to be contingent upon what we just discussed. So, any motions?
I will make a motion that we approve the new rates for graves as presented, and that contingent on...
Further vetting.
And that we approve the proposed use of proceeds contingent on checking statute. If it's a statute, Jen's gonna know about it. And since you've got a 60-40 policy, the only thing we have to know is, can it be 100% instead of 60-40? Okay?
Am I permitted to second this motion? Being an historic...
I'm happy to step down and second it. I'll step down just to avoid anything, appearance of whatever. I'm going to happily step down and second this motion. Hearing none. Let's take it to a vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Did you vote?
I wasn't sure I could even vote on it.
Do you want to just abstain?
You can abstain.
Yeah, it's gonna pass.
Yeah, abstain.
All right. The ayes have it. The motion passes. You waited and you were rewarded, Mr. Ferry. Thank you very much, sir.
Can we tell him no?
No.
I don't think we tell him no.
You trust him. Okay. We are gonna get back on track here, and under new business, the next item agenda is sign warrant for the state primary election. Madam Administrator, did you have anything that you wanted to say about this?
Nope. We're having a primary. We need to sign the warrant. I think it's September 4th.
Good night. Thanks.
Thank you.
What day of September?
That's right. This is the primary for the state election, and I think everyone knows this, but just in case. Polls are 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM at the Dayton Elementary School for both precincts 1 and 2. And you normally read what is up for election, right? So, this is the Senator, Congress, the Governor, the Lieutenant Governor, Attorney General, Secretary of State, Treasurer and Receiver General, the Auditor, Representative in Congress, Counselor for the 1st District, I suppose I should read their district, Senator in General Court for the 1st Plymouth and Bristol District, Representative in General Court, 5th Bristol District, District Attorney for Bristol County, or Bristol District, it says, Clerk of Courts, Bristol County, Register of Deeds, Bristol Northern District, and County Commissioner, Bristol County.
All right. When we set the date for the special town meeting in August, this was considered because I know there's guidelines.
We went right down to Pam.
Yep.
And she made the call before anybody else was contacted. We had a handful of dates, and the 21st was the one that worked for everybody. So, yes, we...
Very good.
Fully vetted.
Any further discussion? All right. Accepting motions.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we sign the warrant for the state primary election as presented.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. Motion passes. We're gonna give... Wait just one second. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is to sign the contract for Weston and Sampson to conduct environmental studies. And before we discuss this, I need to ask you, is the word "sign" there specifically? Did we already... Like, I know this was approved at town meeting. Do we need to vote, or do we just sign it?
You should vote.
Okay.
You should vote because it would ratify everything because it was executed.
We should vote to approve and sign the contract.
Okay.
Because we approve the money at shore.
Town meeting.
I'm going to ask my colleague, Selectman Goulart, did you, before we even vote on this, did you have anything you wanted to say about it?
No. This is just the next step that we need to take as far as we have approval, we have the funding for the environmental studies for the land that's being offered to us as a gift from AstraZeneca. So...
Chairman, Selectman Pacheco, do you have anything?
I moved it pretty quick. First, you tried to take my desk away. I'm chairman.
I'm not getting upgraded.
The contract expires on June 30th. Do we think we're gonna have this done for next annual town meeting so that we can vote on whether or not to accept it? I'm just concerned about that date.
Yeah. Does it... I wanted to ask...
The date of the contract, we keep it within the fiscal year, and quite frankly, we want it done before then.
Absolutely. That was my point, so...
Do you know how long it might... Yeah. Do you just have any idea about environmental studies?
Eight weeks. Well, not really. I was told this. I don't know them. So, eight weeks about for the first phase. They want to start in September or October. So, we won't be approaching the town at the fall town meeting, but I do believe we'll have some indication of what's going on at the annual.
Okay.
So, we'll be able to take care of that if it comes to that, but...
And if anything comes up that is gonna carry over, all we do is amend the contract dates because the money is still here.
Yep.
And they signed it. So, it's just...
Do you have that version, Madam Administrator?
It came over electronically, and so it's an electronic...
This will be...
Things are on their part, but this will be our original. It'll be with the town accountant. It'll be with the town accountant. I'll have a scanned copy, we'll send it over and we'll be.
So that's the original this?
Nope, in your hand.
The vote tonight is to vote to authorize, to allow, authorize me to sign it, correct?
To approve the contract and authorize you to sign it for the town.
I read through it. I'm not quite sure who put this together, but whoever did, I'm assuming it's you.
Nope, Nancy Goulart.
Excuse me, pardon me. Fantastic job.
I can't take credit for the short form or the long form.
Oh, I thought you did this.
When, I did.
Oh, okay.
But when we talked about the need for this, I went back to the stuff I used at UMass and pretty much changed everything from the Commonwealth University to the town of Dayton. And there's even references in there to, if we hired somebody to do some work, like write the town book and there are copyright things or there's protection of data or research. And some people would say, but your rent and space, why is it in there? We'd say, don't worry about that. Read the part that says what you're going to do and how much you're getting paid. That's all you have to agree to. The rest of it is boilerplate. So then we gave the shot, one and the long one, to Attorney Gate. He said, perfect. So that's, that's why we've done it.
That was my next question. I have just.
So it's basically a state contract.
I have a procedural question. I understand, you know, we changed the procurement thing. Great. Are we running, are we still running contracts by the town accountant? I know we don't ha- have to. Are they run by you?
So this is, as Selectman Gulak said, a boilerplate. So what happened with this one is.
I'm just speaking more in general.
In general.
Yep.
I mean, I'm in charge of procurement. I don't know of anybody that's going out and doing it themselves and the whole town has operated on this of if you do 5,000, it's a short form and if you do more than that, it's a long form. So everyone's been using this. The funny thing about this though, is that there were some, just silly typos instead of like or, it was of or whatever. So that was caught and I have since changed my template because I go in there, I just take the file and I change out the names, I add attachment A, which is usually whatever the scope of services is. And you know, I'm on my way and so there were some things in there. So I know that people use it. I've, you know, Karen does it and most of the, all of the procurement really is going through me right now. So I do see all.
And the other thing, oh, just to address the signature, additional town signature, the reason that that's on there is because at the state level, the short form contract didn't need an additional review. In our use, if it exceeded a certain amount, depending that, there were levels of approval, that would be signed by the Director of Procurement in Amherst or if it hit a certain threshold, the President of the university had to sign it. Okay? So anyone who did these knew, okay, so if it's this amount, it goes to Jake and if it's this amount, it goes to the President's office because it gets an additional review. So that can be anybody, the town designated, because in the past, it did go to Jen, okay? And there are certain things the town accountant has to do about contracts, blah, 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 that don't involve procurement but involve actual contracts that the town enters. So Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion that we approve the contract for Weston and Sampson to conduct environmental studies at a total cost of, where's the total cost?
$68,500.
$68,500 and authorize the chairman to sign it.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it, the motion passes. And I just wanted to thank you.
You're welcome.
For taking that ball and running with it. Absolutely. And for answering the tough questions at the town meeting.
Hey, that was, that was something that was really, really important.
Absolutely.
I felt.
We felt very strongly about the need. When we read what AstraZeneca gave us as like what our liabilities would be with the land if we took the donation, yeah, we knew, we knew this was going to be needed.
My eyes were like, I don't know what we're signing up for.
All right. Moving right along, we're going to get on this second page in a moment.
We dabbled over there already.
We're going to sign the VEDAR contract for tax collection and financial software. And with that, I'm going to give the floor to Madam Administrator if there's anything you want us to say.
Just if you remember, this is that grant that the town was awarded, the IT grant. This is converting the sewer commissioners, their billing and accounting software over to VEDAR to be more consistent with the town. This is really a helpful thing to the town because of the way liens go out, demands, it's also helpful for the public because they're, you know, having one billing system, which will be helpful going forward. So the, when we presented this to the sewer commission, they did ask that if they went over to VEDAR and we received this grant, there is a, an annual cost associated with using VEDAR and it's much more than what they were using, but the service is better. But they did ask that the town take a look at indirect costs in exchange for that, so.
Like a subsidy or.
Not a subsidy, but look down at the breakdown and reassess it and take into account that they took on this kind of added burden, if you will, of extra cost for a benefit that the town side is realizing. So that's during the budget.
I think that's totally reasonable because, and I have not seen the figures, so I'm not going to commit to anything, but I think that's very reasonable. And part of the reason is because they're helping us synchronize the software that we're using between multi-departments.
And lessening how much work needs to be done by our staff and the treasurer's office for checking and it is helpful to the town, so.
And we appreciate that, sewer commission. Thank you.
Do we know how much money is involved for this amendment?
The grant?
No, the amendment.
So the whole.
The whole grant are going to be spent on the amendment?
Yes, we actually had to get their quote and send that in. So this includes, it's about, I can't remember now, I think it's 19,000, but some change. And it includes data migration in addition to the software. Five or seven years.
So we think it's 19,000?
19,000, is it right there?
Yes. Yep, 19,043 and 50 cents.
Oh, I missed, I was so close.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. I move that we approve the amendment to the VEDAR agreement in the amount of, for additional services, in the amount of 19,043 dollars, 50 cents, grant funded and authorize Chairman of the Board to sign it.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it and the motion passes. Just one second. I have to do this now because we're going to get out, it's going to be like 3:00 AM and I'm not going to want to sign this.
That's the drawback to these bi-weekly meetings is because you have, this meeting is like cloak.
And I hope the public does understand that, that if, well, we are second and fourth Wednesday now, just please expect when we do have a meeting, it's not going to be 50 minutes. It's just, I don't even know what's going to be on the next, it's going to be longer, so.
Well, the thing is, they can watch it in piecemeal.
But you get to see us less.
They can, but they can watch it in piecemeal, like if they don't watch it all tonight, they can catch a pot of it.
If they can watch it on YouTube, absolutely.
I was, I mean, this is, this is not indicative of a real meeting. I mean, we had the very lengthy discussion with the school department, so.
It was a presentation. I get it.
I'm glad they came.
Me too. We definitely appreciate that. And next on the agenda, last for new business is a road opening permit for Dayton Water District. We did receive a piece of correspondence from the Dayton Water District dated July 10th, 2018, ooh, right, right before, the day before our last meeting, to the Board of Selectmen. The Dayton Water District, in accordance with Chapter 359 of the Acts of 1950, is hereby notifying the Board of Selectmen, its intent to enter upon a town road located at Lot 3 Main Street. The purpose of this excavation is to install a new water service at this location. Sincerely, Cahalo Bryan, Dayton Water District.
Now, Mr. Chairman, I move that we grant the request for a road opening permit at Lot 3 on Main Street from the Dayton Water District to install a new service.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it, the motion passes. Yes, you are correct. Please change your letterhead, Dayton Water District, need to be updated. Okay, correspondence. We received on July 10th, 2018, a piece of correspondence from the Massachusetts State Lottery Commission. Dear Sir or Madam, the Massachusetts State Lottery is offering, offering a Keno monitor to existing Keno to-go agents in your city slash town to display the game at their location. In accordance with MGL, Chapter 10, Section 27A as amended, you are hereby notified of the lottery's intent to install a monitor at the following location in your community, the New Fast Smart, 420 Somerset Ave, North Dayton. If you object to these agents receiving a monitor, you must do so in writing within 21 days of receipt of this letter. Please address your written objection to Carol Ann Frazier, General Counsel, Legal Department, Massachusetts State Lottery Commission, 60 Columbian Street, Braintree, Mass. 02184. Should you have any questions regarding this program or any other issues relative to the lottery, please call me at 781-849-5555. I look forward to working with you as the lottery continues its efforts to support the 351 cities and towns of the Commonwealth. Sincerely, Michael R. Sweeney, Executive Director. So I guess what I would ask my colleagues is, do we have any objection to these agents?
All this is so you're required, I mean, they're required to let you know that a Keno thing is coming in.
What's a Keno monitor?
It's the, like, have you ever, it's like right there?
Yeah.
And you can play Keno.
Balls are popping out.
Okay, all right.
So we don't have to vote on this?
Nope. It's, if you object.
Does anyone have an objection?
It's only if you object and.
Nope.
I have no objection. Selectman Gulak?
You know what, I think we should, we should vote to have it on the record. Just that, Mr. Chairman, I move that we note for the record, notice of a Keno monitor installation at New Fast Smart, Somerset Ave, North Dayton, and that the Board has no objections to that installation.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it, the motion passes. Announcements, I'm just going to do these very quickly. They're also on Facebook. The Dayton Fire Association will be hosting the Second Annual Touch a Truck Event on Saturday, September 8th, 2018, from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM on the grounds of Mannheim, New England, located at 123 William Street, North Dayton, Massachusetts. And the Dayton Water District has issued a water ban during the hours of 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM for irrigation systems. Handheld watering is permitted. And we're going to move.
Just before that, do we have a, do we have an update on the Colonial?
Yes, as you may know, it was postponed because of weather on Sunday, so it's going to be in the fall.
Oh, you don't have the firm date?
We don't have a date.
Oh, it's going to be in the fall.
It's going to be in the fall.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I would just like to announce as a reminder, Saturday, August 4th, is the Pan Mass Challenge Jimmy Fund Bike Ride through Dayton. So all of you folks that line up on Horton Street and Williams and Center Street, please be out there to wave and support the riders on the PMC bike ride, please.
Thank you, Selectman Gulak. And with that, we're going to move on to Selectmen's reports. Selectman Gulak?
I have a brief one. Last Thursday night was the annual meeting to act on the county budget. The county budget of, in excess of $21 million was voted unanimously and of the $21 million plus in the budget, the total assessment to communities in the county is a little over 6 million. The rest of the money will be coming in through various services that they provide. And we reorganized the Board and Joe Pacheco from, Selectmen from Rainham is Chair. I was a reappointed clerk and Skip Vadney from Rehoboth was appointed Board Member.
I think we're well represented over there.
And we kept it with small towns.
Absolutely. We like that. We like to hear that. Selectman Pacheco, did you have anything?
No, I don't.
You'll do it next week.
You talking about the Selectmen's report?
Yeah.
No, other than the fact that you and I both attended the school committee meeting last week, I found it to be informative. That's why I was in favor of the modules that we agreed upon. But that's basically all I have to report.
All right. Moving along. Do we have any acknowledgements this evening, Administrative Assistant Brady? All right. Well, I just want to acknowledge everyone for keeping on, keeping on.
They're still with us.
Doing a great job, as always, the employees. And we do have some minutes, so I'll entertain a motion to act on the minutes.
Can I just make a comment? So I'm throwing a curveball at you. So in an effort to kind of better keep track of minutes and be able to get your feedback, it won't be like this in the future. So I would like them, I had the suggestion that they be on for except for review where they would be officially submitted to the Board of Selectmen as draft minutes. You'd have a week or whatever our schedule is to come back with any edits and then they'd be presented to you in that form. You could even at the, at the next meeting say, oh, I don't agree with this, I said this instead and make it, accept it as amended as we did similar to the Soil Conservation Board. So that's why that says except for review, the minutes.
I didn't even see it, thank you. My eyes are tired.
It's late.
Were these sent out to us? These look familiar.
No.
But this is perfect because now we have some time.
I thought I wrote through the back.
I saw it today. So I'm actually happy to take, you know, a week and go through this. This was an important meeting, the minutes that are being covered. Yeah, it was a long, important meeting. So I'm actually okay with accepting them for review and kind of doing that as the standard practice going forward.
So when do they become official?
We would vote on them next week, right?
Well, that, right.
We would actually vote to accept them.
Tonight is to vote to accept them. You all take them and review them and if you're fine with them, great. If not, provide your changes. You can provide those to Karen, you can provide them to me and then we can come back at the next meeting and they'll be on there for approval and that's when they are the minutes.
And then nobody can say they didn't see them or they didn't, not that anyone ever has.
We can also keep track of where they are, who's reviewed them.
And the changes that were made.
Who's not.
Okay. I think that's great.
So do you need a motion to?
Move to accept for review.
I'll move to accept the review of the minutes of the regular meeting of July 11th, 2018.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion.
The only thing I'm going to ask is that Karen take my changes and give you a clean copy because I'm really embarrassed by my handwriting.
No.
So.
I thought Selectman Pacheco was a doctor in his past life. I saw his notes last week at the school committee meeting.
So if that's okay. I mean, if you don't mind it, I guess it's not a bad deal. I did, because I will not remember, I've been hiding my hand all night, but I will not remember them.
I saw it too.
But I'm the only one that brought it up.
It's.
I'm the friend that won't tell you if you have something in your hand.
I'm the friend that will tell you if you have food. Just so everyone knows, I will look out for you. Okay. Sorry, thank you for going on with that process.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it, motion passes. Approval of the warrant?
Mr. Chairman, I move that warrant 3A-19 in the amount of $89,909.43 payroll. Warrant 3B-19 in the amount of $63,574.64 accounts payable, both dated July 18th, be approved.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it, motion passes.
Okay.